Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners. We're going to call the meeting to order, and Brian, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12 to 1:15. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and the items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. We'll start with Patsy.
Thank you. On February 18th, I did attend the BLM scoping meeting. That was the one for grazing that was held in Elko. They held it in four different states, and this was the only place that we had in Nevada. Lot of ranchers. John Rabby was there, who's our BLM State Director, and the project manager Seth Flanagan was there. Got a lot of really good input, and we'll be talking about that later as we come to our agenda item on that. On the 21st, I had a NACO meeting. A couple things on that, of course. Our legislative conference is coming up this weekend, actually, the 29th through the 4th of March, and President Trump will actually be addressing our general session, and they are vetting everyone for that right now, so that's kind of exciting. Senator Jackie Rosen is hosting a couple Grant Series workshops, and with that, she has targeted local government for those grants, and she has representatives from Department of Transportation, Department of Agriculture, and FEMA. And her first workshop is on the 6th of March in southern Nevada, in Clark County, and she hasn't announced the one for the north yet, but she's working through NACO on that one. So that's a little bit different with some of the folks that will be attending, and a nice opportunity. NACO also made the decision for our annual meeting on 2021, which will be held in September in Virginia City. And because things are so limited there, they wanted to get that on the agenda early, which is what they've done, so they can start working on the logistics already. We have an interim legislative working group that has requested a presentation from NACO, and this is regarding our county roads. And so, NACO has sent out information, gathering that from the county. And they will be presenting that to the interim committee on the 5th of March. One of our speakers was Ken Moen. He's president of the Nevada Airports Association, and he invited all the different commissioners and counties to attend their conference, which is being held in Tonopah on April 6th to 8th. Of course, our airport engineer, JUB, always attends, and one of us usually tries to attend. I will be attending with one of our airport board members this year for at least the FAA meeting, but not the whole conference. But he gave a lot of good information on what the Airports Association does and what grants might be available through there. We also had some information on the board for the fund of hospital care for indigent persons. This has been going up quite recently, of course, quite a great deal. And the board, which is also put together by NACO under our statute, actually voted for $8 million to help pay county assessments for the Medicaid long-term care program. So we'll see what comes out of that. Looks like it might be a little bit of relief. And then, closing, I wanted to let you know that our final environmental impact statement for the Fallon Range and Training Complex modernization, that has all been completed, and NACO is the one that's representing a few of the counties, and one of them is Lander, and they have got their letter out. Actually, I think the record of decision is supposed to be out the first part of March, but a lot of the information that we had asked for did not come out clearly in the final EIS that we were asking for. So the way that we have structured it is, we've tackled some of these things. For example, when they decide to, when the government decides to buy out the farms, we had been very, very strong in our opinions of, they have to include the AUMs. That's part of the fair market value. These ranchers actually have a lot of AUMs that they have had for many, many years, and we wanted to know what they were going to use to actually come together with the AUMs and how they were going to determine that, and they didn't give us any finals. So on all those things that we had questions about, that the Navy did not step up for, they've left in the finals saying, we've contacted our legislatures, they are well aware of our opinions and what's going on, and we want the legislatures in Nevada to help us get that information nailed down, to assist us. And Governor Sisalak was on board with that and agreed with our letter also, so we're happy about that part. On the 26th, gee, that was yesterday. It sounds so long ago all of a sudden. I did attend the meeting with the Department of Agriculture. It was at the Austin Forest Service Ranger District regarding our crickets. And we were really behind the curve last year for a couple different reasons, and the Department of Agriculture told us that they did not have the request letter from BLM or from the Forestry Service to actually begin their baiting. So even though we were calling them, saying, we're seeing crickets, and they're coming in, and let's do something, it was such a very few calls that they really didn't get on it. And then when we finally got on it, we said, they're not doing this, and we tried to order stuff, couldn't, everybody was out of bait and so forth. So this year, I think we're on top of it. We actually have crickets that are hatching right now in Austin. So the Agriculture, Department of Agriculture is aware of this, and they claim they're going to start baiting in March, and they have to do certain times that crickets have to be so old before they can bathe and all this other stuff that goes with it. So that's good news, so hopefully, our department, Bert Ramus, is on top of that, and our county manager is on top of that. So we're going to be coordinating with them in baiting at the same time on some of the different areas that they cannot do. So if any of you have any problems with crickets somewhere, be sure and bring it to our attention as soon as you can, and hopefully, we are already ahead of you on that, but in case we miss something. And I have one thing else I wanted to share that's kind of exciting. Tonight, on Wild Nevada, which is our PBS station, they are actually doing a presentation from Elko, all the way to Battle Mountain, so they will be doing the California Interpretive Trail Center, and they are highlighting our Cookhouse Museum. So it's at 8 o'clock tonight on our PBS channel. Thank you.
I attended Nevada Works last weekend, and they had a budget audit, and what's happening is because unemployment is going down, the funding is going down. It was kind of interesting to listen to the problems that Nevada Works facing, and one of the biggest problems that they're having is training people to show up for work. They'll be hired, and they won't show up to work. I thought that was kind of interesting, that they get to that point that they get a job, and then they don't show up. But that's the number-one issue right now with Nevada Works. And then, the other thing that they talked about was, how do they help students that don't quite make it out of high school with the skills that they need? So that's going to be an interesting discussion in the future. I also went to the grazing, almost a meeting in Elko. It was not the regular kind of meeting that ranchers were looking forward to, where they could voice their concerns and get replies. One of the things that the ranchers were really looking for were well-defined limits and goals with the grazing, this double height, and when they can turn out and all this, and it didn't, the format just didn't allow that. The format was a number of stations put up, and you watched a presentation of some kind, and you could either email or write down your questions to be sent in. So the ranchers were a little bit aggravated by that.
I had a convention and tourism meeting. I had a conflict with that. Who was there? Oh. I had a convention and tourism meeting. I actually had a conflict with that meeting, was not attended, and did not attend it, and that's the only thing I had this go around.
Nothing to report?
Okay, so, on the 19th of September, I did a teleconference with CERC, the quarterly meeting with that, which CERC is the State Emergency Response Commission, and we're involved in that through LEPSY, which is the Local Emergency Response Commission. Anyway, well, so, it was actually, it was pretty interesting. A lot of different organizations are members and attended and updates. This was my first time, so I wasn't really sure what to expect, and what I got out of it, lots of training. There's unimaginable training available out there for your different emergency response and whatnot. So that's kind of, I did get some information from that, and it's kind of, with the LEPSY, they'd really like us to participate quarterly, so this is a new thing. I just wanted to report on that, that I don't know if it's ever been mentioned, but it was interesting. Sorry. So then, I did attend NACO last Friday, and Patsy pretty much touched base on everything. One of my notes I took down was talking about the BLM released their draft supplemental EI in the Federal Register to address the greater sage grouse. So that now is, has 45-day comment period. And they were talking about also the grazing, and one of the things that was mentioned is the targeted grazing. They had hired a private contractor to kind of do their study, and he did not perform as per the NEPA, and so he was basically fired, so they haven't gotten their NEPA in on time. So that's really put a delay on a lot of those things. So that kind of mess things up there, but other than that, that's all I have to report.
Staff reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended.
So next week, Kyla and I are going to Washington, DC. Unfortunately, it's not for NACO, but we are going to support and promote our lands bill. We have several meetings with several different representatives from Nevada we're going to meet with and talk with them about our lands bill, justify it, and hopefully, get it on the fast track to be approved. Our right-of-way for our waterline project, for the airport waterline project with BLM has been approved. I have that. It's been given to Public Works as well as our engineer of record, or our engineer who's been working on it. There's airport things that are coming up, but JUB is here to discuss all that. We're ready to move forward with our grants and our letters of intent and so forth. And as far as the crickets go, we did have a meeting separate of the public meetings with the Department of Ag on a couple of occasions recently, about two and a half months ago, and we are prepared to put out the cricket bait. We're going to work with Ag and Forest Service and BLM. That's what I have. Thank you.
Public comments. For non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussions of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the direction of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, manner, but public comments based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Any public comments?
So, we're, I, you're, I'm?
Please state your name.
My name is Michelle.
Yeah, hold on a second. We need to record it. Okay.
My name is Gail Show, and I live on Broyles Ranch Road. And currently, I have a lot of concern about the intersection of Broad and Broyles Ranch Road, which has an enormous amount of traffic now, much more than we ever had. I used to call it Battle Mountain Rush Hour when the mines got out, but now there are constant trucks that are not only going up and down into that intersection, they're making wrong turns into Broyles Ranch Road, so that they're going down, turning around, and coming back. I personally have been avoiding that intersection like the plague because, and the exit where you would get off right on Broad Street from the highway. The trucks are just tearing up those roads there. They don't seem to really care about any of us that live here. And in addition, they are going to cause additional damage to the road that, I don't know the name of it, that runs between the John Peters and the hospital, because most everyone I know, including me, are avoiding that area of Broyles Ranch, so we're using the road between Peters, the Peters Building and the hospital. And that's going to put a lot of extra traffic on that road, which is really, I'm sure, going to start getting to the people who live there, and the road is not really prepared for any kind of heavy traffic. And I'm just very concerned. The kids cross at that intersection, there's nothing but a stop sign, which hopefully everyone obeys, but there's no guarantee on that. And I just think it's turned into a really dangerous situation, and I'd like to suggest that perhaps a stoplight, not a blinking, but an actual stoplight, could be put on that intersection. Originally, I thought maybe, you know, that it would only work during the rush hours, but with the amount of trucks, I think maybe we need something more than just a stop sign for truckers who aren't familiar at all with the area before someone gets really badly hurt. That's all. Thank you.
We can't comment on this. Anyone else?
My name is Rhonda Gurley. I live on Broyles Ranch Road. I've almost at the, right there by the Baker's Brew and the Portisupps, that stop sign, I've been almost hit within three feet of my rear end of my car by trucks, big trucks, that just come barreling out of there. I called the deputies one night, he said, come here and see you guys. You know, because it's, I have, I pick up my grandkids from school, and a lot of times I have kids in my car. It's very dangerous. You know, I don't know what they could do, except maybe put the flashing lights like what they have at the Owl. I don't think they see it. I don't know, but it's pretty dangerous, you know, for me to have to call a deputy out. I was so shook up. He was so close to the rear end of my car. And I'm upset now because it's like, there's going to be an accident, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Keith Westingard, for the record. I just, I feel your concern very, very deeply on this. We've been trying to work with NDOT on this, to try to get some resolution to the trucks. So it's not that we're, we don't know about it. We are attempting to get something worked out with DOT. And not to put any bad black eye on DOT, but it's just a slow process, but we are well aware of it. We've talked about different options, and hopefully, we'll get some resolution sooner than later. But that is a state highway, so we have to work with DOT on that.
Hasn't there been some private property sold to try to remedy this?
There is. It's in the works right now. My understanding is there's some property that Maverick is looking at purchasing, which would expand the areas, hopefully, to relieve that traffic on 305 and Broyles Ranch. Thanks.
Any more public comments? Consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners. With one action without extensive discussion, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available at a nominal charge. We're going to pull check number 206743.
You have to read them in first.
I'll read these in first. Okay. Go back to the consent agenda and what we're going to allow. Approval of February 27th, 2020 Agenda Notice. Approval of October 24th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Approval of November 7th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Approval of November 25th, 2019 Special Meeting Minutes. Approval of December 5th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Approval of December 19th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Approval of January 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of January 23rd, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Approval of February 13th, 2020 Meeting Minutes and Approval of the Payment of Bills. We're going to pull 206743.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, if it's okay. I'll make a motion that we approve number one, which is February 27th Agenda Notice, and number two, Approval of October 24th, 2019 Meeting Minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Been seconded?
Aye.
Everybody?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Nobody propose? Now we go on to pulling the checks? Okay, we're going to pull 206743, 206864 for Brian, and 206741 for Patsy, and 206729 for Judy.
I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of those bills.
I'll second.
Aye?
Aye.
It's approved unanimously. Okay. We're done with that.
You have to approve each check count.
Oh, okay. Okay, now we need to approve checks, 206743, 206864.
One at a time.
One at a time?
Okay, otherwise, we can't all vote.
Well, you can, yeah, just Brian's and then...
Okay, we'll do Brian's first. 206743, 206864. All in favor?
I'll, I make a motion that we approve those bills.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
To my employer.
Okay, for Patsy, 206741.
Make a motion to approve check number 206741.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Kathy seconded.
I'm over.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I abstain on that. Thank you.
And then, for Judy, 206729.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
And I abstain.
Thank you.
County Manager, number one, for possible action, an update from A&amp;M Engineering on the proposed sports complex and the direction that should be taken.
So last year, the commission gave me some money.
Keith, will you hit that?
A thousand dollars.
Thank you.
To look into some different projects. There were several projects that I looked into. This one seemed to be, I put at the top of the list, was the sports complex for the community. When I got together with Aaron here at A&amp;M Engineering, I told him to make this thing the Cadillac of Cadillacs for the community. And then, when he presents it, as he goes through the different stages and the different parts of this project, if the commission wants to trim things down or make things different, that's what it's for, but just keep in mind, this is, this is the Cadillac of Cadillacs. This is second to none. And with that, I'll give it to Aaron and his crew team.
Thank you, Keith. So Aaron Martinez with A&amp;M Engineering for the record. My lead designer's with me today, Rosanna Roscindes, and we're very happy to present to you today. And I'll let Rosanna take her spot at her computer station, and we'll start to go through this. And I apologize to anyone in the audience. We could only get our computer as far over as we could, so if anyone would like to see the presentation, you want to sit on this side of the room, feel free to come on over. I'll stand back here, just so I can stay out of people's way. I apologize.
Hold on a second.
I just got a voicemail. Is Austin on the line? Is it...
Michelle, are you there?
We're here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So today, we're going to be talking about the sports complex, and it is located, Rosanna, if you wouldn't mind going to that overall, a C2, we can kind of globally talk about the She's got a C for multiple angles, so we apologize there. So Commissioners, today, the item in front of you is most likely going to be one of the largest impacting projects you'll most likely have on your community. So today's agenda item is for possible action, but the intent is to kind of get your opinions, the comment from the public, in what we call our programming phase. And that programming phase tries to hone the design or the master plan of the design into what the community and the stakeholders actually want to see. And so, this is a meeting to open a large, broad discussion. I think it's going to open a lot of questions, comments, and concerns, and so we're here to take that information. If we need to tweak the design or do any of that and come back to you with that feedback, we're happy to do that. So this project, like I said, is very impact-wide, and my experience from sports complexes have brought me to the vision that you're seeing here. This vision is from my firm, and the main point of it is to try to encompass every type of sports activity you could possibly have in a true sports complex. Usually, when you think about a sports complex, it's softball, baseball. What we've tried to do is try to encompass the entire community, and so I'll just kind of give you a brief breakdown of the sports that are going to be included in here. We have baseball, softball, football, soccer, basketball, tennis, skate park, and equestrian. So, sports complex, equestrian, what are we talking about? So I'll get there. But it's, this is an all-encompassing idea, and then, again, if we don't like it, we can take things in or out, so we're happy to adjust that. So globally on the project, you have your fields here, and it doesn't seem like my parents very easily to see on the TV, but we have our main football field and all the school district property here. The sports complex is just next to that, on the Easterly side. It encompasses the entire parcel boundary that's currently in that property, and there's also some discussion of encompassing... And there's also some discussion of encompassing some property just north of the football field as well, and I'll, and I'll get into that. The main access of the site comes off here. We have a, kind of a, uh, industrial access into the sports complex for offload and ADA parking. The remaining portion all comes off of an existing roadway. And we, we, that we would extend into the main parking lot on the northerly portion of the complex. Uh, the soccer field is located on the far north of the complex and it too has its own, uh, parking lot as well. Rosanna, if you wouldn't mind shooting over to the model, uh, we can start to navigate through this for you. We'll kinda talk about the project overall. It's a very huge model. We bought our birth computer here, so you, I apologize if it's any delays or anything as it, as it starts to be created. So while that's loading, um, I'll start by talking about the baseball and softball fields. And I think the most important thing to understand about this design is, again, we're trying to be all encompassing. It's not about T-ball, it's not about major leagues, it's not about tournament play, it's about all of those items. And that kinda leads me into, um, the specifics on each field and I'll start to touch on those. For instance, with removable fencing, removable bases, including pitching mounts, we can basically allow for, on the soft, uh, softball side, or excuse me, on the baseball side, T-ball, majors and minors, what they call a fifty-seventy, which is a seventy-foot base path. And then you have your juniors, seniors and your big leagues. Now, on the two fields that are on the far easternly portion of the site, that's these two guys here, those are designed for tournament play, so that Lander County, and I'll get into some of this, uh, uh, investment leverage, uh, Lander County can start to target maybe some more tournament play type things in order to generate revenue for the sports complex. But kinda getting down into the local community with removable base paths and, and removable fencing, we're able to basically allow any age group, whether it's softball or baseball, to play on, on all the fields. Now, the two smaller fields here, they're smaller because we are restricted on our total space for the site. So we originally looked at trying to place two of the larger fields, uh, on that site, but it's just not feasible with the current layout. And so that's why you see the two larger fields on the easterly side with the smaller fields on the westerly side. Now, on the smaller fields, we're able to, again, achieve a, an enormous amount of, uh, age groups. And on D two that we provided to you folks, you can start to see exactly which age groups those are. And we break them down by color coding. So you can see each base path that's identified there, yellow, purple, green. Those all, uh, pertain to a very specific age group and we've listed that for you on D two and D three of, uh, the items in your packet. Another interesting thing that we were able to incorporate, past softball and baseball, so I think globally, we've got all these age groups on as many fields as possible. Some of those age groups, the older ones obviously have to play on these larger fields, uh, whereas, uh, the younger age groups can fit within these smaller fields. Kinda quickly jumping over to football, what's interesting that we were able to do here, again with removable fencing and, and some slight tweaking to the layout of the complex, we're able to achieve a eighty-yard Pop Warner football field here with a twenty-yard end zone. And then on the larger fields, we're able to achieve a hundred-yard football field with twenty-yard end zones. So just on these four fields alone, you have all of your softball, baseball and football, uh, groups incorporated on those fields. Now, obviously, there's time conflicts, like, the, obviously softball and football aren't gonna be playing at the same time. But, um, it does offer Lander County the ability to continue to have these kids being able to play in multiple fields, uh, to just kinda leverage that investment. So instead of placing all those funds towards softball or baseball, they're being placed towards softball, baseball and football. And so that's kinda the thought behind that methodology is that you're leveraging that investment across all those, um, groups versus just one particular group. Talking about soccer now. The soccer fields are located on the far north end of the project. You'll see several individual fields here. Those, again, are fields designed for particular age groups with removable goals. This whole field becomes one for the regulation-sized soccer field. So again, on the soccer, we're trying to utilize as many of the age groups as possible. And so even down to the little tots, you actually cut these fields in half and each of those fields becomes two fields. So kind of just looking at it eyeball-wise, there's sixteen fields within the soccer field itself for different age groups. Then those sixteen fields turn into eight fields for an older age group and then ultimately one primary field, uh, for the single older groups. There's been some discussion about, um, the equestrian trail and I'll bring that up. Uh, now, we have an existing detention basin that takes stormwater for the site. And then this site, uh, and I'll get into some of the main attributes, but essentially this site is gonna be discharging a ton of stormwater. And we're planning on putting it on the southeast corner of the property. Those, that infrastructure is usually unsightly. It's like a big hole in the ground, bunch of water goes there, weeds grow. Nothing really ever occurs there, except on major storm events, the water discharges into these basins. And so what we've tried to utilize in the past is we utilize these detention basins in order to, uh, have some sort of activity in them. And you could have an equestrian trail that circled the entire parcel is the design right now. And inside those detention basins, you could do an equestrian trail where they could walk their horses, step over logs, climb over a bridge. Uh, those types of things that, uh, some equestrians like to do and this could be a facility for them. Obviously, there's some liability concerns and some things that we'll talk about further. Um, but globally, these detention basins for stormwater would be a multi-use, uh, effect where the equestrians would be able to occupy that space in some sort of trail aspect. Rosanna, if you could please go back to C two again, I'd like to talk about where those parking would occur. So right now, we have a parking lot design over here, again, taking on the north portion above the football field. That's where the parking of the equestrians would occur, trying to keep it segregated and away from everything, including offload and things like that for safety reasons. And then also this space is, um, available for an additional activity that I'll jump into shortly. So aside from football, softball, baseball and soccer, we have t- the existing tennis courts, which are on the south end of the parcel. Those are currently existing and the, uh, budget allocation that you see now has those being resurfaced and re-retrofitted, but trying to save the leveraged dollars that are already in place on those tennis courts to just kind of rehab them in order to, uh, get those, uh, up to speed as well. Okay, so the last thing, uh, sports-wise that is included in the current design is a skate park. Rosanna, will you jump into your three D? And I'll hone in over towards that skate park, please. So this skate park is currently designed to be what they call, um, what, what I call is an electronic, um, Segway and skate park. So the new, the newer age, uh, they're riding these segways and, uh, basically electronic scooters uh, that require more of an easy rolling, uh, type of, uh, concrete design. And then you have your traditional skate park as well. So, uh, the current skate park that's out there is, is in absolute worst location possible for this current design. And so we were instructed to potentially remove that existing skate park in order to have it coincide with our master plan. That's good, thank you. So that skate park is located near the soccer fields. And again, it's designed for a typical skate park that you would see as well as, um, the electronic Segway type park as well. Okay, so the only sports that I can come up with that are not included in this design currently is an ultimate frisbee course, which is kind of a newer, well, it's not new, but it's a sport that is becoming more popular and it requires, uh, some poles and some chains in order to throw a frisbee between the poles, kind of like you're playing golf. Um, and then the other sport that's not included right now is an ice skating or, or some sort of, uh, winter skating approach. Obviously, the skate park, they can have roller blades and things like that, but in the wintertime, uh, the only other thing I could think of was an ice skating portion. So with that said, uh, if you don't have any questions about the globally, I can start to hone in on the actual site itself. What does that entail? Materials and those types of things. Any questions so far? Okay. Let's, uh, look at the, uh, the center complex, Rosanna, and, um, the deck. Or I guess before you pull that deck up, we can talk about that concession facility. So again, you can see all the multiple base paths and those color identifications, so you can start to see those age groups of the field and how that works. All the way down to where those batter boxes are and all those things, uh, take place. So on the field level now, what we're looking at is a combination of a restroom and concession facility, but we're also very concerned about storage. With, is, the design that we have here, we've got a ton of removable fencing that's gonna have to be easily accessible by each field. And so we've got some innovative designs on that storage that I'll be talking about here shortly. But, uh, this center concession facility does have some storage ability, but it's more of, um, incidental type storage and not necessarily mass storage like removable fencing. Um, this is a single-story structure design right now and it encompasses, uh, about forty-eight hundred square feet. All right, let's go to level two, Rosanna. Bear with me as she transitions. So, so this design here and, and the model that you're seeing in your agenda packet is obviously the model we're looking at here. And that's A one oh one. And I just want you to rest assured, the way that this rendering came out, it looks like a, like a, a two-story structure, which it is, with a roof on it, which is true. The rendering makes it look like a solid roof. And what we're trying to achieve is a pergola-type roof on the upper deck. And so what you see here is, is essentially we have a, a, a spanning deck structure that is basically encompassed all within the fields themselves. That deck structure is, uh, about twelve feet in the air and it has a substructure underneath it to where the staff can wash the deck down. That water falls into essentially an underground, or underground, an underdeck layment gutter system that then allows that water to discharge. So anybody underneath that deck shouldn't get too many drips on their heads. And that kinda takes me to the storage item I talked about. With this type of structure, we're able to then frame up other s- storage component areas underneath this structure that then allow the field access to pull, push and pull all the fencing to and from the field, uh, really easily. And so we're kind of leveraging costs by creating this upper deck scenario, which then creates a ton of storage ability underneath, uh, which I think is, is a nice item, because if we do go with this design, there's a lot of work that takes to getting the fields prepped to get the proper baselines in and also the proper fencing in place. This upper deck portion here, um, again, is, is, is overlooking the fields. It's gonna allow seating and also your s- announcer's booth are located at each corner of the field. So you can see the announcer's booth there. And the current design right now, again, has a structure that's spanning the roof of this entire portion. And it is a pergola-style roof, so it's not something that's gonna hold snow. But the thought was, is that if there was a ball flying through the air unbeknowningly, that it would significantly decrease the odds of someone being hit by a fly ball. Now, we can't stop a fly ball from hitting someone in any field, right? And that's why they have those fences. The current design of this is a super tall fence. So we've kinda got about another fifteen feet of vertical height on this fence that's been typical of most fields. So it's even an additional safety factor. Uh, so I think that the combination of that fencing and our pergola, pergola-style roof, I think that that upper deck is extremely safe in comparison to your typical fields where it would just be a standard fence, no overhead structure protection. So with that said, um, the lower portion is, is currently designed with a stamped concrete. The upper portion being a Trex-type of, uh, deck material, again with a pergola-style roof. In the center here, you'll see we have a playground on that upper deck. The goal would be to then potentially, if, if the ice skating rink was something that was wanted, uh, we could potentially look at, uh, a slab-on-grade structure right here in that center section, uh, which you would then remove the playground area in the s- wintertime and then, uh, you could then utilize it as an ice skating rink in the wintertime. There is some, some significant design features that would go into an ice skating rink here or on the ground. So again, I'm trying to provide the commission with as much information about the sports that can be included on this design. And if you do think that like an ice skating rink is something that you wanna see, I can always come back with some more definitive costs on that. Uh, because of my current cost estimate that's been provided to you does not encompass, uh, an ice skating rink. Okay. We have also utilized underneath each, the, the deck structure, um, some indoor pitching areas so that the, if there are some rough weather days, uh, those folks that are warming up can kinda do so in a little bit more of a controlled environment. One item that we are also looking at is on the prevailing wind side. We're looking at a barn-style accordion door system so that you could almost wall off a majority of this open space on the prevailing wind side, uh, with some, uh, barn-style accordion doors, large rolling doors that, uh, we think would further, uh, protect any items stored underneath the structure in the winter. And, and then also, um, just kinda protecting that investment from those, those winter, uh, hard, harsh winters that we sometimes get. Okay. So I think, uh, without any questions, I'm gonna jump kinda into some investment op, the leverage of the investment itself. So without, you don't have any, Mister Sparks?
One question.
You bet.
What is, uh, what's the parking design for this? I mean, how many people can park?
So right now, the current model illustrates about a hundred and fifty parking spots, I think, off the cuff. Um, it seems a little limited for the amount of people that we can harness on the site. And, and that's one of the items I have to bring up with the commission is, is how far they would like us to go with the ter- tournament play. And that's where I was getting into my leverage of investment, because if we start to do tournament play and things like that, people bring RVs. And so there's all sorts that would just eat our parking lot up. But currently, right now, the parking lot's semi-underdesigned and will probably need to be increased by fifteen percent with the current that we have here. Uh, so you got the two parking structures here that'll join this portion of the complex and then the soccer has its own segregated as well. And then also ultimately, we have the school overflow parking on the other side, which makes sense because school and sports typically don't coexist at the same timeframe. So we did look at that overflow parking at the, at the school as being a secondary option. But, um, to get into the leverage of that, of, of the investment, one of the key factors that I see as a, as a potential opportunity for Lander County to at least supplement their budget with offset costs that can be raised from this investment, the, the, the big opportunity that I see is tournament play and how can Lander County be involved in that with this type of field design? Uh, inclu- and if you did the, the structure the way we've identified, those teams would even have some small locker room areas to change into. And I think those types of aspects are not offered anywhere else that we're aware of. And so it really would, I think, be a great selling point for that type of approach, if you wanna go that route. Uh, one thing that we were looking at was potentially utilizing that northern portion above the, the field as a, as an RV space, if that's what the commission would like to see, uh, so that you could really try to get like those twenty-four-hour tournaments here where people are literally flooding your town and, uh, they need a place to stay. And whether they can utilize some space that we've allocated here or your local vendors, those are all opportunities. And so right- Um and so right now, the tournament play is an extremely viable uh income generator. And I think it should be seriously considered uh for this type of investment. So with that said, the secondary revenue generator that I see as a potential for this is we looked at a as a as an alternate. Rosanna, if you could go back to that concession facility. We looked as an alternate of and and I know this is on the agenda uh today for your golf course, but another opportunity. If the commission would like is you could do on the second story or even the first story of the concession facility. We had actually envisioned on the second story being a restaurant. And so where that playground was and that little uh ice skating rink that I'd identified, uh what we have laid out here is a second story restaurant. Uh which you could allow seating outside, just like we currently have, and um and that restaurant could be leveraged. Uh for all sorts of vending opportunities. Now, I know that the county has had some. Discussion about the golf course and 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 being able to have a vendor occ- occupy that. And so this would obviously compound that issue, and so uh but it is definitely an option that we wanted to bring forward. Um as that innovative approach to making this complex the best, frankly, and probably the western United States. Globally, material-wise, the fields are all astroturf. So what that does for maintenance-wise is no one has to mow the lawn, but someone does have to vacuum the lawn. Uh it has a sand ballast that gets placed on it, but as rocks and things get on there, it takes a maintenance. And they have these machines, and I think that Lander County's familiar with it as the school district. Uh item that's already in place is astroturf, so their maintenance is at least somewhat understanding of it. The design life of that typical uh astroturf can run anywhere from ten years to thirty years, depending on how much usage. And whether you get on that facility, so that's one thing to keep in mind. Rosanna, if you wouldn't mind quickly pulling up that uh cost savings analysis I did. It's up on your second tab. She can't see around that picture. Okay, alright, so I think the biggest item that's gonna be pertained here is 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 water saved. I think maintenance-wise. Uh it's hard to say your maintenance is gonna completely go away. Like I said, no one has to mow the lawn. But there's maintenance associated with this astroturf, and I would never try to candy coat that. So I look at the maintenance as almost a wash. You want, it's gonna go towards improving this nice complex and keeping it up to date. So I think your maintenance costs are really gonna increase, cause you don't have this type of part currently. So I think globally, you'll wanna look at your maintenance costs as increasing. Also globally, you'll wanna look at your 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 resources being uh saved in that in terms of water. So right now, if we were to have this current sports complex as grass, we would be spending about forty-eight thousand gallons a day just to water it. Okay? Forty-eight thousand. So in a six-month water period watering period, so we figured you'd water your grass from April. To the end of September, essentially, that co- that that's about eight point seven million gallons of water every watering year. So the cost per day, now Lander County's costs for water are very low. You got a pretty good water department over there. Uh so there's three hundred and twenty-three dollars a day in cost savings on water. That equates to fifty-eight thousand dollars per watering period, which is every six months. Which equates to in a ten-year decade, you'd have about a half a million dollars saved. And across the thirty-year design life of the project, you're about one point eight million dollars saved just in water. Um so that is of course a small percentage of the overall cost. Probably around three percent, but you're able to save a lot of a lot of water. Uh just going to spit on a bunch of grass. So so there is some serious savings there in terms of that water resource. Uh that needs to be uh taken into consideration. Yes, yes, Mr. Clark.
Aaron, I have a question.
You bet.
Um what's the average water use in in a house, an average family of four people?
So when we do our design calculations for that, NDEP would probably tell me to use seven hundred gallons a day.
Seven hundred a day.
But I think realistically, we're all using probably anywhere from two to four hundred gallons a day.
Okay, so what I was thinking about is with the water savings is. How many new homes we can provide with with water for the future? I mean, homes are important, because then we have a good tax base.
Well, yeah, I mean, just off the cuff, just on a per-day perspective, you could imagine how four hundred gallons could go into fifty thousand pretty easy. So it definitely, from that perspective, is significant, most certainly. Great question. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay, Rosanna, back to your three D wall, please. Again, so I'm kinda finalizing this with uh kinda giving you an understanding of materials that are going into the site. And then from there, I can take any more questions. So again, we got astroturf in all of the. All of the fields, including soccer, and uh the inner portions, the track, the warning track, all that is also. Uh astroturf. Again, uh the the concession facility will primarily be a. Uh what we call a CMU structure, concrete masonry unit, to basically be uh blocks with concrete filled in the center. And um again stamped concrete on the bottom portion, Trex decking on the upper deck. Um again, the restaurant that you're seeing here is just a is it just a incent uh cost-revenue incentive possibility? Again, we have all the pitching mounds and batting cages in between the fields. And I think one of the largest cost expenses for the project, and you can see in that breakdown, is uh the lighting. There's a lot of costs that go into that lighting. And so with that, Rosanna, let's pull up in that uh overall cost estimate, please. So the way that my firm breaks down cost estimates is we tart- we track the market in previous bids. And we take those values and we and we bring them into our spreadsheet and we keep them. So when you're looking at this overall estimate, we have our typical market, high market, and a low market estimate. So again, the typical market is pretty much an average across the board of or the most frequent number utilized for that bid item. The high market and low market are exactly that. The highest number we've ever received for that bid item is what's placed there. And the low market would be the lowest bid item we've ever received for that bid item. So with that said, the highest value that this complex is is at is fifty-one million. The typical market value is thirty-six million and the lowest is twenty-five. We feel that right now, this current design minus the restroom faci- or excuse me, the restaurant facility. And ice rink item that we discussed, uh this project is sitting um roughly around twenty-nine to thirty-six million dollars. There are some, again, some bid alternates uh that we had identified in this particular estimate. Uh one item I I did not bring up, which was a dog park. That was um one other sport that I forgot to mention. As an opportunity, if the commission would like. So with that said.
I have a question, please, I have a question. This wouldn't be for one budget year, would it? How many, how many years?
I'm looking at about three.
Three years. Twenty-nine to thirty-six, huh?
And I think that that uh three-phase approach, I think, is very, it coincides very well with the field development. I can hone into each field cost uh more descriptively, however the commission would like to see. That is uh the nuts and bolts of of the site and kind of our global presentation, and I can go into any specifics you'd like.
Let me. You have a question?
Yeah, Judy.
Um so I guess one of my questions, Aaron, um was. Have you looked at other sites? Besides, you know, that area over by Limerick School. Um I know we're still working on the lands bill and whatnot for the golf course. Property.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a large piece of property still remaining from what hasn't been used for the golf course. Plus the the fact that there's already ball fields, and they're kinda um. You know, there's a lot of of feelings towards those ball fields, because you know, a very beloved man. You know, helped build those, and to to kinda save that um history of of Battle Mountain. And incorporate a new field into it. Um plus, you've got adding to the sports, the the whole concept of sports. Right next to the golf course, and you've got the uh um the clubhouse. So I'm just kinda curious if that was ever mentioned.
Sure, that's a great question. So the question was basically, have other sites been evaluated, right? Is that? And so so our direction from Lander County was to specifically look at this site only. And so to answer your question, no, I have not looked at any other sites. The golf course did come up as a potential opportunity. But because of that current location where those existing fields were, the decision had made at that time for us to look at just that location only. For our designing purposes, because we have to go through, and 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 Lander County's invested money. In the survey aspect of that site, so part of the design criteria for this project. Is we need topographic information in order to properly create a master plan. So Lander County invested money towards a site that seemed feasible as most to them at that time. Be and and to allocate those resources to go survey that particular site, because at that time, it was the only feasible site that we.
Can I, can I stop you for one second and point out the fact that um Lander County did not do this? The commission. Did not have a say in it, that this is pretty much new to the commission as far as location and whatnot, so. One individual is the one that's making this determination.
And that's part of why this discussion's in front of you today, right? This discussion is to come and generate. Proper discussion, right? So the question that you had posed seems more than appropriate to be asked, right? And so that's the discussion that we're here to have today. So I'm not sure if it was one person that you've identified. We've actually spoke to several folks in order to create this programming phase, and we've been trying to interview different people. Including folks in your community that um participate in the sports leagues, and I think some of those folks may be here today.
According to the people that I talked to that are involved in the softball. They're for this because of one reason, they wanna consolidate the baseball field, so that you don't have. One kid over here, one kid over there, and another kid over there. You can have everything in one place. And the big thing is water savings, especially for the future.
Absolutely.
Aaron, yeah, thanks, Art. Uh thank you for the presentation, by the way. When I first seen, I was like, holy crap. I'm like, are you kidding me, right?
Right.
When we set out to have Keith, you know, direction to do the study. Um so my concerns are um. Huh?
Your mic?
It's on.
You're good, you're good.
Yeah, uh was that first and foremost, the location. So my concern was, cause I know there's a lot of people in the community that. Um the softball players are, you know, I've heard talk of like the forty-four hour tournaments could bring a lot of people into the community and whatnot. With the location, my concern is that it's so close to a school.
Mm-hmm.
Um I don't know if that's, if there's been any thought to that, you know, if you have kids and they're holding a tournament, cause some of those, I think, they're on like Fridays and. Things like that.
Right.
Um my next thing was. Is it a bit overkill for Lander County? I mean, like he said, he spared no expense. It was, this is like state of the art. I mean, you see, this is something I think you'd see in Las Vegas or or uh uh Los Angeles or. Battle Mountain, three thousand people, really? I mean, that was my thoughts, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any sort of. I'm in favor or against it. I'm just opening this up for discussion, getting everybody to look at it.
Right.
And my last comment is if if we decided to do something like this, I think absolutely we should have a community meeting, involve the rest of the community, cause this is a large chunk of money. So that's all I have to say.
So Brian, I just wanna comment, um a little bit of of what you said about, you know, overkill for Lander County. Um. I was really curious, when I go over um. Aircart Road in um Elko, what was going on down by the river. And so I actually talked to um one of the um city council members, and they are building. A sports complex, and they are also going in phases, and one of the things they're looking at is is these um. Tournaments. Um I know he mentioned car- or um Sparks has has a really nice. Sports complex and ball fields and whatnot, and they actually do generate quite a bit of money for these different tournaments, and it would be a draw to. Lander County, and and I do think that, you know, it is a lot of money. Um. And and maybe just a tad bit overkill, but but by the same token, um you know, Elko's getting one. Um it's a bigger draw, that i- it's a lot more involved than we realize how many people play these tournaments. And travel around, and um you know, it kinda sold me on it, talking to to the city councilman. Um a- and the potential, and also as Art had mentioned, um having everything. All the fields in one particular area versus how they are now spread out, plus more of a professional field design. So there's, there is some money to be made on it. I don't know if it would ever pay for itself.
Right.
One of the issues I see is if they aren't staying in RVs, where if we don't have enough hotel space to for people to stay. Where, what are we going to do for that?
That's a great question, and I I fully agree with you. I think that if we do wanna target tournament play, we need to be able to house them appropriately. Or that's an opportunity for one of your community members to, you know, maybe start a business also.
Does anybody here in the audience have anything to say about this?
I have a question.
Okay, could we come up one at a time, please? We'll have. Yeah, public comment. Come on up.
Kalina Costalanos, for the record. I just have a question, looking at this, you didn't have a volleyball, outdoor volleyball section. And I bring that up, cause anytime you drive by Elko's Park, you'll see kids are always using it. We even have kids in their twenties do it. They have a group. They send out messages saying, hey, let's go over here and play. Um so I think, you know, if we're doing something like this, that should be added, cause that's something that is definitely used in this community.
Yeah, thank you.
My name's Reed DeVries, and I'm a field maintenance guy for Battle Mountain Little League. I'm also a board member and a coach. And one of the concerns I have right now is we have six baseball and softball fields, and we use every one of them in town every night for practicing games. We're also using the soccer fields you're gonna tear out for these, for three T-ball fields for practicing games almost every single night. And we're also using a soccer field at the schools to make a practice softball field for the girls, cause we got so many signed up this year. And my concern is if we rip out these two baseball fields and that soccer field, we're essentially losing five little league fields. And not only during the construction of it, but even after the construction, we're still short on fields. I'd almost say if we could move these fields somewhere else. And use them in addition to what we've already got, we'd be better off in the future. I mean, we're limited right now. I mean, trying to get those kids home before ten o'clock at night is a huge challenge right now, especially on school nights. Like I said, we're short on fields now. I think we're gonna be shorter when you get done with this project, even though it's a very beautiful complex. It's well laid out. I think another location needs to be chosen. So we can keep these fields in play.
Let me ask you, on the scheduling.
On the scheduling, Reed, you're saying we need more than four fields at one time? Or are you saying that you're concerned about the construction and not having fields available?
Both. During the construction, I'm concerned that we won't have these fields in the spring for the kids. And then we're gonna have to obviously look elsewhere and change our scheduling as much as possible. But the other problem is, is trying to get all those games and practices, even normally with all the fields we have now, we're struggling to get everything done before ten o'clock.
How many ball fields do we have right now?
Six.
Six?
Yep.
And and we can't schedule with six?
Well, we also have the high school using two of those.
Okay, so then you're down to four.
I mean, I mean, we do everything we can to schedule it, but it's still a challenge.
Oh, I know, I know that scheduling was an issue when I talked to some softball people.
Mm-hmm.
Um and you know, having a kid in one league and a kid in another league and your practice all night.
And as far as them being spread out across Battle Mountain, that's not really a big issue to us, just because, I mean, it's a fairly small town. Um it's just we don't have enough fields right now, and I and the fields are already there. I'm, all I'm saying is we need to move these fields somewhere else and save what we've already got as much as possible. And then it takes the stress off these new fields as well, and we're not fighting with everybody trying to get field time. The other question I have is the synthetic turfs are really nice, but you're saying they're only gonna last ten to thirty years. At what cost per field are we looking at to replace this synthetic turf over the years? Um and are we gonna have that money? Um, and are we gonna have that money in ten, fifteen, twenty years to replace that synthetic turf? I know the school had said their football field's gonna cost them five hundred thousand dollars every ten years to replace it. Um, I think this is something we need to look at, so we're not getting ourselves into a bind in the future with budgets.
Aaron, what is the replacement cost?
Yeah, so you, you could take a look at each field. I've broken down fully that uh synthetic per turf portion. Uh, right now, we're targeting about eight dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot, which puts that field for the s- uh, let me see. For field one, that's about four hundred and forty-four thousand per field.
And in ten years, the cost is gonna go increase. You know, it's not gonna stay at eight something.
Right. I mean, they're very nice. I'm just concerned that we're gonna get ourselves into a bind and then not be able to replace them.
Just wanna, we wanna talk about this and get some ideas. We all agree that it's nice and we all agree that it'd be a, a nice addition to the county. But we really have to weigh, you know, the cost associated and, you know, how many people extra to the employees are we gonna need? Is it gonna be seasonal? Is it gonna be full-time? I mean, there's a lot of questions with this. There's no doubt it's a huge project.
Yeah, to kinda touch on some of your comments though, so right now, under the current scenario, I have two fields and a soccer field. When this is done, you'll have four fields and a soccer field. So you're gaining two much larger fields that technically could get broken up into several practice groups on these ones here, especially for your younger groups. So, so to me, on your younger groups that you're talking about here, you're probably gaining six fields with this current layout. Because you guys don't need that entire space to practice. I think we used to break those fields up into two when I coached. Um, but, but so, so that was kinda my first uh off the cuff. But in terms of the construction portion, you're dead right. You're gonna be missing two fields and an entire big soccer field while that construction goes. So that is something that definitely needs to be taken into consideration to assist you guys, so that you can continue to practice. And I don't know if the golf course has some options there.
Thank you. Um, you all are absolutely right. We have never really brought this on as an agenda item before. It had been discussed and a lot of people, and we started putting a little bit of money away. Uh, I think we were all under the impression it was gonna run a few hundred thousand dollars, to be truthful. And so I think you've caught us all um in, in absolute awe, most certainly with the cost. But the other is what it could be. And so I know we aren't going to make any decisions today. But I do agree with Commissioner Brian. I think this needs to uh have a, a public meeting. We, or, or a couple of them to go into some more detail and most certainly get feedback from this community before we ever do anything. Um, my first inclination is always to say, let's cut the cost here. And you said how much we had for storage. And I'm going, oh my goodness, we don't need that. But the bottom line is, if we're really gonna do this, we don't, we don't wanna be caught short in ten years down the road saying, I wish we'd have built this bigger. So if we're gonna have a vision, we've got to have the vision before all of us. And we've got to do it right. So um, I don't know if you, uh, Mr. Chair, if you want a motion for us just uh to continue and, and have a couple of community meetings. Um, but like I said, I think we all want to know more. Nobody's gonna vote no on this today, I'm sure. Um, but nobody's gonna vote yes either, because we have a lot to do. So how would you like to do this?
Yeah, we have more public comment. Come on up, John.
John Davis, resident of Battle Mountain for the record. I don't have a problem with what Mr. Martinez put together or the county put together with this. I don't have a problem with doing something for the community. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Sparks on, is this a bit overkill? I mean, this is the top notch, best of the best. But from a taxpayer and somebody that's been here my entire life, there's no way in the rest of my lifetime that we could have enough softball tournaments or baseball tournaments to ever pay for this. If, if we approve a thirty-six million dollar complex, it's a breach of your guys' responsibility with my money. Maybe we could look at shrinking the project, getting it down. But if we have this kinda money to spare, to throw around, maybe you oughta give the taxpayers a little back. I pay all kinds of taxes. I don't have a problem with that. I, I'll pay them. But when we're looking at these kinds of dollars, it's huge. And I, you just can't be throwing that money around. Smaller scale, I get anything to help our kids and give them a place, I'm for. Uh, my past experience with the board, maybe the commission oughta get together with the school district and give them a portion of the net, of the proceeds, our tax dollars, so we can get it continuing. I think that that money at the district, we're gonna have more impact on more kids at, on that side than we will building a thirty-six million dollar complex. Uh, I also don't like it next to the school. I, I think it's a bad deal. You get these twenty-four hour tournaments. There's uh alcohol, probably some drugs. Uh, I just don't think it's a, a prime spot for that. Especially when you have a, uh, a school function going on, a basketball game or something going on at the junior high on the weekends and you have all these things going on. Uh, other maintenance costs are, you brought it up. How many staff is it gonna take? Are we gonna, are we just gonna hand the keys over to adult softball, little league, say, here you go, with a thirty-six million dollar complex? Or are we gonna have one, one person isn't gonna take care of this? It's a, it's a two-person deal, at least. The synthetic turf on your design, I get it. I mean, water is a precious resource. Uh, I just don't know that it's something that, i- if the return on investment is, is there. Especially in ten years down the road, when you go to replace it and the cost is thirty percent higher than what we budgeted. But we gotta work in today's dollars, that's all we have. So I just uh voiced my concern as a taxpayer. I, I don't like it at this scale, anywhere close to this scale. Uh, so you go back to the drawing board, community meetings very much need to be done. Uh, you know, your thirty-six million, if there's five thousand people in the county, that's seventy-six hundred dollars a person. That's gonna work out to build this thing. And uh, I'm sure Commissioner Waits probably has a, something to say about that. Representing Austin, that's not gonna get anything out of this. So, um, but they still have a voice.
Well, Austin surely can come up here and play baseball. And on one of your other comments, the school district does get a lot of net proceeds and lines from the county. It comes through the state to us and we disperse it.
That's correct, but where the district has nothing on the tax rolls, per se. Elko County, if I'm not mistaken, they're, they have a percentage of quarter percent or a penny or something on the roll.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, the district used to be on there. At some point, we got booted off. So it's an option that I think that everybody needs to look at and be aware of.
And John, if I could kinda reply back a little bit on some of the things you said. So my experience is, take a look at what's being built in Elko. And all due respect, they're my client as well. Take a look at what's being built there. We didn't design that, but just take a look at that, okay? And put that into perspective of about eleven to fifteen million dollars. And so I want to caution everyone here today that yet, this, today's uh meeting is, 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 is step one. No one's asking for approval. The county manager wanted this to be as a step one to this process. And so that is why we're here, is to create this discussion. So all the items that have been said here are duly noted. And I, this is exactly what we needed to start this off. But, but to go build four fields out of grass and sitting at an eleven to fifteen million dollar price tag, I think you would be doing your taxpayers a major disservice. And so my experience with reality of building these complexes is your end product at this cost versus your end product at this cost are significantly different. So when you go to Elko and you see that fifteen million dollar project, I think you'll start to maybe be able to visually compare this design to that. And I think you'll see astronomical differences. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
Eleven to fifteen million dollars for what they did in Elko?
Uh, yeah, it's eleven to fifteen.
A third of what this is.
Yeah, it's a, it's, 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 it's got its own complications and the city of Elko did a great job with that project, but that is the reality.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good work.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I mean, I was just gonna say, um, for, Elko's going in phases. And I don't know what the app, the end cost is going to be.
Well, so it's got a lot of, that project is very complex. But basically, this current phase was around eleven to fifteen million dollars for the infrastructure you're currently seeing. And the, the overall project was a thirty-five million dollar project, uh, an infill project. But that project could not be budgetarily obtained.
One of the other things I know is they actually did get some grant money.
Yeah.
For that.
And there's a masquerading component that was brought on by their design engineer that was unfortunate. So there's, there's, again, there's complications to that project. But, but to me, how I looked at it is even if it's on the low end of an eleven million dollar project, that does not feel to me like an eleven million dollar sports complex. And so that is where our design initiatives have taken that information and, 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 and created the vision that you see here as um our best approach. And in terms of if we want to trim items out of this, we can most certainly do that.
Any other public comment? Please come up.
My name's Corey Mills. I'm the head baseball coach for Battle Mountain High School. And my question is, is this going to incorporate these, are these high school fields now as well? Or will the current high school fields also be retrofitted? Because I'll tell you right now, the current high school baseball field is in absolutely horrendous condition. The high school baseball field is in horrible condition. I personally spend hundreds of hours every year just keeping it playable.
Thank you.
Uh, on my own time. And so my question is, I know this is geared towards little league and all the, the young kids, which is amazing, because we need to keep them involved in the community. I personally think part of the reason our sports participation is dwindling is because we don't have great facilities for these kids. You know, you look at the little league football team, the football league, and their numbers stay high. Cause they have a cool, awesome field to look forward to when they get to high school. You know, we've got gopher holes and goat heads and potholes and, you know, and so, and so if this incorporates high school, that just puts another complication into it as, as far as little league is involved as well. I'm just wondering, is this also gonna be a high school complex? Or is that another item that has to be addressed on a different time?
The softball field and the high school field, are they county or are they school district?
County.
County, okay.
With the agreement, right? County, with the agreement that the school keeps them up, is that right?
Yes.
So I, I think that that would just have to be part of the discussion. And we've never excluded the high school from anything.
Right, but that, that was my, my question is, is this now gonna be the high school's new baseball field and softball field? Or are we staying over there? And if that's the case, I really feel that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, yeah. Scheduling's gonna be an issue. There's no doubt about that.
But to answer your question, the two larger fields are designed for high school play. So they would fit your needs, but as Art identified, that uh.
Mr. Mills, how many fields do you need for a tournament for high school?
You could do a tournament on one field, so.
So if you have two, you could have a bigger field.
Yeah, if, if you have two full-sized baseball fields, you could do it a lot easier.
You could have zone.
Yes. And we had, so we had regionals here two years ago. And going back to the condition of the field, the two weeks before regionals, I spent eighty-seven hours on that baseball field.
Home field advantage.
So, no, no. No, it, it's, it's honestly unsafe in a lot of areas to play on it. And, and we continue to work on it and, but it's, you know, I, I do it, cause I love it and I love the kids in this community. I definitely don't do it for the money if anyone's ever coached. Um, so it's, it's, that's, that's a big concern. What I heard about this is, is the high school going to be benefiting from this as well, uh, not just little league?
Well, I think that our concern is that the whole community benefits from our decisions, not just one group.
Right.
That's what we have to keep in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi guys, Donnette Johnson, resident here in Lander County. Um, I'm also on the board for adult softball. Um, we've got that league going and we did two years now. We're going on our third year here coming up. Um, along with Corey, you know, and what he had to say as far as things go. If you guys decided to say, get rid of the turf and you did the grass, what is the maintenance looking like? Because the adult softball fields, the high school fields, the little league fields, all that we have right now, there is no maintenance to them, pretty much. Besides what we can do. And being that they're fields, baseball or softball, being that they're fields out there, you know, and the county does own them, there is no maintenance to them. We use them and we take care of them when we use them. But like adult softball, we play from maybe June to, to August. You know, from the time school gets out till the time school starts, that's what we play. So we maintain them then. But throughout the whole rest of the year, they don't get maintained at all. So that is a big concern, is if we're gonna spend this money, who is gonna be responsible to maintain them? I also think that we do need to do it in a separate place. I do, I've got kids on little league. I do the adult softball, I've done it all. Um, it sucks, it really does, excuse my language, it does suck to have one kid playing over here at six-thirty and the other kid playing over here at six-thirty. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but it is even in Battle Mountain, trying to get to all the fields, if it's at the same time, cause you're only one person. Um, so I do think that is a big consideration to go to a different spot, to have that available. I've done the forty-four hour tournaments, like you mentioned, in like Winnebago and that kinda stuff. I've been around adult softball my whole life. Um, they revenue a lot of people coming in for those tournaments. Winnebago actually got rid of their forty-four hour tournament. Um, I heard they're trying to bring it back. I haven't heard for sure if they have or not, but they did get rid of it. Um, that's a huge thing for us to pick up, something like that, for the adult softball league to bring that in here. We would have to have the right type of facility to do that, though. Um, with the.
Can I ask you, why did uh Winnebago get rid of it?
I don't know why they ended up getting rid of it. Um, I just went the last year that they did it. But I know my aunt and uncle had played in that pretty much since it started, since they started doing it. Um, and they live in Fallon, but there's people that would come from Arizona, California. I mean, and then obviously all over Nevada to go to those things. Where we're located, we might not be a big town, but we're in the middle, which makes it so much better for us. So even though it's like, like you said earlier, Brian, um, you know, it seems like a lot for Battle Mountain. It, it's probably a lot for Battle Mountain, but it's a lot to bring into Battle Mountain. And we brought that rec center in here and nobody around here, Winnebago, Elko, they don't have anything like that. We've been able to bring in a swim team. We've been able to bring in gymnastics for the kids. So even though it seems like too much right now, it is a huge thing to bring people into. We're in between Elko and Winnebago and Carlin and all these different places, Love Lock, that do softball and that kinda stuff. It's a huge opportunity for us to bring it in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You ready for motion?
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion, um, that we ask A and M Engineering to um, to look at some other options for us in reducing uh some of the costs, um, some of, and some comparisons. And that we hold a community meeting for um, probably in the evening for more input from our citizens.
Could I ask a question? Uh, so do you want other sites evaluated? And if so, there has to be some modification in scope, because in order to obtain costs, like grading costs and those things, in order to accurately project costs as I've identified here, we have to do survey components for those particular sites, so.
I'd say let's have the hearing first. And at the hearing, we can get more input and see if they wanna do other sites from there. Because um, I mean, we could spend all day on this. I'm sorry. Um, and, and it is a beginning. And if it's something we're gonna look at, I know we have to cut the costs. I know we do. So um, at this point, I think what we'd really like to do is a couple hours, I'm sure it'll take that or more at the meetings. Um, and then we'll, we'll decide whether we want you to continue with surveying other sites, et cetera, and where we're gonna go.
So your expectation of my firm at the next meeting is? So your expectation of my firm at the next meeting is the performance is...
Take, take a look at this right now and see what, see what we could cut, give us some, some options if we did do the regular, the regular soil, or if, if we can, I mean, you might have some other ideas how we can cut it, and we may not need the top and the skating rink, we might go another way, I mean, just something. Because, um, I have to agree, this is, I mean, this is more than this whole building right here, and, and, uh, and, and I'm okay with, with going ahead, but like I said, I'm still stuck on the two or three hundred thousand that I thought we were gonna do, so I'm, I'm, I'm really still in shock. But, um, if, if the commissioners are okay with something like that?
Okay, I, I'm not in shock about the price, I figured it'd be that much, but what's your motion?
My motion, my motion is for him to look at some other options to try and get our costs down and to hold a community meeting in the evening.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Commissioner, thank you so much, Corey.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Go ahead to item number fourteen. For possible action to approve discussed comments for submission on the proposed revisions by the Bureau of Land Management, who have recently been tasked with updating its regulations for grazing forty-three CF Part four-one-zero-zero. Grazing administrative, administration exclusive of Alaska with comments accepted online through March sixth, twenty-twenty.
Thank you. Yes, um, we had this on our agenda last time for us to do a letter and make our comments, and this is so extremely important because our, our folks out there on the rangeland have been under, um, the rangeland laws for what, the last twenty-five years, I guess, and certainly have needed updating. And for the first time, they've asked for our input, which we think is so important from everyone and even individuals, so if any individuals today would like to also make comments, we have some copies of some comment, um, forms that you're very welcome to take, so please stay afterwards and do that. So along with that, um, our county manager has, uh, filled our request and put together a two-page letter that comments on the regulations and our information, and I think you all have copies of that letter now. Uh, there's just a couple things that I would like to add to that. Number one, I would like it, um, right now it's on the letterhead of our county manager, but I would like it on the letterhead of our county commissioners if we vote to go this way, because I, I'm ex- extremely, um, interested in, in those folks getting the individual comments and knowing this is directly from our commission and how we feel about this. So I'll hold up on the, um, um, the couple comments that I have on the letter and, uh, go ahead and let you finish your public comment.
Yeah, public comment. Does the commissioners have anything to say? Judy?
Um, I, only thing I have to add to Patsy's, and thank you for that, Patsy, is, um, being, being on the, um, letterhead of the commissioners, which I definitely agree with, is, would we all sign?
Well, as long as it's on our letterhead, I'm, I'm okay with the county manager signing, knowing, you know, like, either way, we wanna do it, but we can address that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment?
Uh, for the record, Paul Tamara with Tamara Ranches. Um, we went to the public scoping meeting in Elko last week. Um, there were four meetings held across the western United States. Um, kinda went with the expectations of learning what this whole process was gonna address. Uh, when we got up there, it was very uninformative. Um, we did not get anything from BLM as what's gonna be addressed by this. Um, we did talk to Jake Tibbetts, who is Eureka County's Public Lands Advisor, Sean, and J.J. Gogacchia, who is working on a committee with recommendations that is being submitted to the National BLM. And Eureka County did hold a meeting the day after, I believe, of the Elko meeting, and they presented what, and I think J.J. and Jake worked on a, a handout, um, I believe you guys have that in your packet now, but it's a few talking points that, uh, Eureka County felt needed to be addressed in these regulation changes. Um, we have since got that, I've read that lot better, uh, I got a better idea of what's gonna be, or what we need to do in our public comments. But, uh, as far as anything from BLM, I wasn't able to get anything from it. I know Art and Patsy, you were both there, and I don't know whether you talked to anybody from BLM that got anything from it, but, but I didn't. So, um, looking at this packet that we got from Eureka County, um, it looks like a lot of what they want to have addressed is, uh, what we've been working on in our agenda allotment, some of this adaptive management is some of the stuff that we work with, with BLM. And it's kind of a process where you address an issue, come up with a plan to address it, and make changes on the fly as needed. Um, if something works, you continue it, if not, and I think this, uh, one of the, one of the requests is to allow this adaptive management and, uh, the regulations, uh, we usually operate on a ten-year permit that has been kinda set in stone. Uh, they're asking for some flexibility to, to use this adaptive management. Um, there's a couple entities that are working on outcome-based grazing there again, uh, at the end of the season, the, uh, an allotment is evaluated. If the, uh, conditions warrant more cattle being turned out, uh, you get a really wet spring, more grass is, is out there and it needs to be addressed to reduce fuel loads or just to, uh, have the ability to run more cattle on an allotment, this outcome-based grazing addresses that. Um, but if you're, if you come into a drought year and the feed is not there, uh, running more cattle may not be in the best interest of the allotment. This outcome-based grazing also addresses that and the adaptive management, and so that is some of the things that, uh, I think I've read these talking points, is wanting the flexibility and the permits. Um, I don't, what do you have, Dan, to...
Well, I haven't read what your guys' letter is, so I don't know what's entailed in that. This is Dan Tamara for the record, thank you, Judy. Um, but some, some thoughts that, that I had, um, not pertaining to Eureka's. Um, I think cheat grass is a pretty big concern in the west, it's what fuels most of the wildfires. Um, it's not recognized as a forage or, or a feed value by the BLM, it's, uh, considered an invasive, invasive weed. I think that would be a, a step in the right direction if cheat grass was con- considered and managed as feed instead of as, uh, an invasive. The, another thing that I think is important would be, uh, range improvements, because in the desert, you need water, the closer it is, the better, or strategically placed in areas to utilize the feed availability. And a lot of the times when you try to get a rangeland improvement in, it is a very costly and time-consuming endeavor. If they could, uh, simplify the process to be able to put in range improvements, it would help a lot, you know, when it takes you ten years to put in a simple water trough and thousands and thousands of dollars, it's ridiculous. Um, maybe, uh, with a categorical exclusion, maybe it could be utilized more. That's a, a way, they kinda bypass the full NEPA EA process on simple projects. Maybe it could be utilized more often. Um, the next thing I got here is the wildland urban interface, and they've been talking about this terminology for quite a while, but I've not seen much done with it. Um, it could be as simple as grading bar ditches alongside the county roads, make your clear strip wider. Um, and it could also be targeted grazing for, you know, if there's a dry grass out there, they could hit it with cows, get it grazed down, you know, and, and the targeted grazing is something that I believe they're really gonna look at with this re-regulation of their rules. So that is something that probably you should look at. Um, one thing with targeted grazing, if you have a, you guys have all been around, you've been out north Battle Mountain, you see dry grass up to your waist. Nobody has enough cows to eat all that anymore. Everybody's been cut down on their numbers and their AUMs and everything. I don't want a situation where they say, well, the uh, fuel load on this particular area's gotta be eaten down to whatever their rule's gonna be, two hundred, three hundred pounds per acre, whatever it is. I don't want them to bring in livestock from other areas into our area to eat those places down. Uh, whether it's sheep or goats or, you know, they could call a, a contract buyer, yeah. They could call a contract buyer and he could have two thousand heads shipped in, in a week. I don't want that type of scenario for many reasons. One, it's my area of use that we bought and paid for and have been running. Two, a lot of the times, these cattle from other areas bring in different diseases or, you know...
I've got a question, how can they do that? How can they break your contract?
Well, I, that's not something that I've seen happen, that's something that I do not want to happen.
Wanna make sure it doesn't happen. Well, it's foreseeable, it's foreseeable.
Yeah, and I, I would like to see terminology to dissuade that from happening.
So Dan, I, I understand the targeted grazing, I'm just curious, is it really that feasible for you guys to be moving the cows that much? I mean, I know it's a pain.
It, it would be...
You have an area is...
It would be circumstance by circumstance, whether it be feasible or not, I, I would, I would think. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of the times you will have an area that, uh, should be grazed down more. Um, you're using low levels of utilization on the particularly uplands or away from the cricks, the riparian areas. But since the water is so limited and that gets back to the range improvements, the cattle might, uh, overgraze the ri- riparian areas along the, the waterways, and because that area has been overgrazed, they will not allow you to stay and actually consume the fuel load. So for that reason, they just continue to grow and grow and grow, so that, that's an issue.
And sometimes for targeted grazing to be effective, you don't need to graze the whole twenty thousand acre cheat grass patch. A lot of times you put a bunch of cattle in there and you'll get cow trails leading to water, you'll get, uh, areas where the cattle have grazed around the water, you can place supplements out there that will bear off a certain area that you're trying to concentrate the cattle in, so you may burn up to a point, but if you have supplements in a line leading to water, um, sometimes those will create natural fire breaks. Uh, you may not graze off that whole area of cheat grass, but you may create a spot that the fire will not be able to, to jump through by, by the targeted grazing. So it doesn't necessarily mean to be effective, that targeted grazing, it'll look like this tabletop. It just creates natural fire breaks in there by the cattle trailing and everything. Um, it, it, it's, sometimes it can be effective, so...
The last thing on my list is the checkerboard ground along the, uh, railroad corridor, every other section being private, formerly railroad ground, now it's Nevada lands or is for sale or has been sold. I don't know what they're gonna do with that, but they, there's something needs to happen. It needs, it needs to be consolidated where they do land swaps to block up federal, private, or something, but it, it makes, uh, if you are, were to wanna put a fence line in, for example, to, for whatever reason it is, it just causes a, a big headache, and I don't, I don't know if that's completely out of the scope of, of what they're trying to do with this, but something needs to be done with that. I'm not smart enough to tell you what that is, but something.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna do everything I can, as long as I'm a commissioner, to help the ranchers, because every time I listen to the ranchers, they are the most reasonable people in the room. I listen to the scientists and all the people with alphabets behind their name, they just don't make any sense. So is there anything in here that we need to change? Paul?
I have not read it, it is in this package.
I don't think we have time.
No, um, let, let me assure you, uh, we did address checkerboard, we certainly did address the flexibility and adaptive management, all that. Um, and I, I think you're gonna be okay with, with the letter. Um, and we did, uh, I, um, I had J.J., you know, send the stuff and Jake Tibbetts both, so I think, I think we're okay with it, but I sincerely appreciate you being here and your input, 'cause it's so important in what we do. Um, so let me go ahead and make a couple changes on the letter, if I may. Oh, go ahead, Judy.
I was just gonna ask, um, one thing I, I really stuck out was the simplify the process for, for range improvements. Yes, I think that's, that's definitely critical.
'Cause in these talking points, they talk about addressing water improvements, especially being a big issue, but, uh, uh, in the several years with the settlement agreement we had in the Argenta allotment, you'd get out there with the national riparian team, the state in Nevada had people out there, the Battle Mountain office had people out there, we had Endow out there, and we'd look at a project and everybody's agreement that it should be done. Two years later, everybody's done shuffling the paperwork and an environmental group comes in and then protests it, because there's so many hoops they have to jump through. Um, Dan brought up the CX process, and maybe if the powers of that CX was expanded, it does not require the same scope of work of a NEPA process or the environmental assessment, so that CX, right now it's for smaller projects. If that is expanded, um, that may be something that just a note could, could be made, that the powers of the CX, the, could be expanded, that would, uh, maybe give the agency, 'cause I know a lot of times you talk to the people in the BLM office, they're frustrated by the process, too. They see the need to make something happen, and they can't do it as well, they have the rules they have to follow, so if the CX is some, a tool that could be used to fast-track some of these projects, I think that maybe should be mentioned.
I sincerely hope this, um, this, this letter will cover most of it. Um, I also, so, I also saw some of the draft letters, like from the Farm Bureau, which is addressing all of that, but they're five pages long, and so I, I know we aren't gonna go that way and we couldn't possibly hit everything, but that's why I encouraged everybody else to do individual comments, so that those are done, but we'll make sure you get a copy of our letter, too. So with that, um, I would like to make a couple corrections. On the very first paragraph, of course, um, I think we need to move this up a little bit, but, uh, where it says grazing administration regulations, comma, and then we need to move that sentence up to the top. And I think we don't need as many spaces, so we can use a little bit more, um, of the letter here. Um, down on the one part where we're saying, Leonard County believes that the following measures should first be considered, and then we have quite a list of things, but when it comes to off-site water development, I wanna put with the water rights retained by the holder.
Has that been an issue?
Absolutely.
Yes, it is. Uh, if you do any range improvements on BLM ground that, and I don't know exactly the way the regulations is at present, but in the past, they've requested a portion of your water right returned to BLM in the name of wildlife habitat, wild horses, um, and that, uh, so a portion of your water rights has become federal property in the past, so that is...
Special property.
Federal.
Federal property.
Federal property, yes.
No, I think that's important. A lot of our ranchers are ready to, to drill a well and to put in the water and, and then, of course, lose their water rights. But why do you put it in? You put it in for your livestock grazing, you put it in for wildlife, you put it in for recreation. They're the ones that are, are the, the best holders of our land, and so um, I wanna be sure that's it there. The only other one is the last sentence, um, which needs to be corrected a little bit. We are here to assist you with anything you may need during the progression of these changes. With that, I make a motion that we approve this letter, put on our county commissioner letterhead with those changes made.
But do you want everybody, the commissioners, to sign it?
Okay, apparently they do, so I'll, I'll amend my motion to say with, but see, that letter has to be done today, then, for all the commissioners to sign it.
You'll have to wait, then.
Then we'll ha- we'll have to wait. Are you all okay with that?
Well...
Does it have to?
If we all have to sign them, we have to sign it today.
Well, yeah, but...
Yeah, well, just get it typed up.
Yeah, get it typed up and it'll be done before the meeting, we can sign it.
Aren't you leaving town?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll leave at twelve.
I mean, it's still, I mean, it's a matter of public record, which, it's all this, it's from the Lander County Commission with the county manager signing, and I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
They may not get the letter by, by twelve noon.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll leave my motion as is and enhance the second as is.
Did you say that?
Yes, I did.
All favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thank you gentlemen.
Actually Tuesday, we're leaving Monday morning, we're there Washington DC myself and Tyler. We're leaving with Senator Rose and Senator Cortez and two other representatives to discuss the land bill we have.
Should have that on.
Uh we're to, to promote that land bill and get it, get it into the House, uh get it through the first steps to uh hopefully get it in place and approved and.
So if we have anything that we need you to bend some of these year, we need to get home before the week.
Or you call me when I'm there too. I think you have my number, so you're welcome to call me anytime and we will make any other arrangements that we, we need to and that we are able to, to push other issues.
Very good.
All right?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, are you waiting on a, a particular item? I know you're busy. We can bump you up if you would like us to.
Number, number three.
Number three? Five? Okay, let's go to number five. The requested action of the Lander County Commissioner is for possible action, the approval, disapproval abolishing Lander County Code two point zero four, point zero two four payroll changes contained in Title II Administration and Personnel. So I guess Keith, you're gonna tell us about this? Ted, turn your microphone on.
Thought you were saying hi. Uh this is an ordinance, it's been on the books for, for quite a few years and with the, the changing laws and the NRSs, it's really outdated. And to briefly go over before Mr. Forgeron proceeds, this is an ordinance that says all payroll change requests must be approved by the county commissioner. Now, the problem with that is it sounds sterile on its face and it sounds fine on its face, but the problem is that the county commissioners approved the job title, created the job, approved the budget, and, and that's their duty to finance these positions. And now you have to go back in front of them and now we have to put the person's name on it. And now, so you'll be, you're being asked to approve under this ordinance, the hiring of a particular individual which you don't have the authority to do. That's the problem with that, I have with the ordinance. Now, the ordinance would, there is one example where the ordinance would be needed or if it was modified, and that is if the job title didn't exist or the department or the elected official did not have financing for that position, then they have to come in front of you and tell you, this is the job title, this is that what I wanna pay the person, and please finance it. Then you'd be doing your job, but you've already done it in two phases before under this ordinance. And so you're, you're getting into uh, the ordinance as it reads today, you would be subjecting uh an elected official uh to approve hiring a particular person and, and you don't have the authority to do that. That's the problem I have with that.
Okay, I have some comments. So first off, you stated there are some NRS changes. I'd like copies. I'd like to know what those NRSs are. Um the second thing I'd like to point out is that this was an ordinance that was passed by the County Board of Commissioners, Will Backwin. My point was who had the authority to have those removed from this agenda, cause it was not this board that said to remove them. I have a problem with that. My other thing is, in, just uh what you're saying is that everything is uh approved pre-hand on the budget. You're correct, but we deal with it every single meeting when we approve the payment of bills. This is no different, and I'm not saying that the person's name should be on it. It's a number, how it has been in the past, a number, and we're not approving the position, we're approving the way the money is spent. And it's transparencies to the taxpayer. They have the right to know that. So I'm in complete favor of keeping that ordinance exactly the way it is and to direct Keith to make sure pay request changes or put back on the agenda.
Okay, I, I have a comment. This is, is this personnel? Is this a personnel issue?
Well, if you're going to discuss an employee that's already, that's going in, you have to put her name on, on the agenda now. That, that's the problem. That's the problem I have.
Yeah.
You, and then if you do that, you're getting into personnel issues. Uh Mr. Forgeron, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm waiting my turn.
I, I, I've got another question. How many other counties put their payroll change requests on the agenda for county commissioners approval or to read or whatever?
The counties I've contacted, none of them do.
Okay.
So, but I can't, I can't say
Right.
that, that it's not done, but.
Right. So I have another comment, is that I'm not asking for the employee's name to be put on it. How we've done in the past, it was, there was always a, a number that only personnel knows about.
Your employee number.
Yes, so, and then I wanna, I just wanna state that the state does this very same thing with the Finance Board. They approve everything. Any spend of money, any change of money, it is approved on a public record. We're just not big enough to have a Finance Board, but that's what we are. We're an acting board of county commissioners.
But a- and I, I would agree with you except that you're approving a elected official's budget. In approving an elected official's budget, you've already approved that they have a right to spend their budget any way they want without another approval from you.
You're absolutely right, but we see the payment of bills, every single thing, on things we've already approved for you. We've approved this line on, this line on, this line, but all those checks come to us.
But Brian, are you saying that you want to approve a payroll change request?
Any payroll change request, anytime there's been a change in money or status, I'm saying it is this board's right to see that and taxpayers to know, to see that.
Well, you can get that on Transparent Nevada. You can get wages, you can get benefits, you can get all that stuff. But coming in front of commissioners, I, I don't know. Judy?
Okay, well, I definitely agree with Brian and, and the one thing, um I was, I advocated for the people's names because that goes back again with the transparency. I really can't remember a, a incident being on this board that we've actually singled out an employee. As far as.
I can think of one.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just saying I can't. Whether you can or not, fine. It's not a habit we make of singling people out. Or, or questioning is, as far as elected officials go and their employees, they work for the elected official, yes, but if that official leaves, they don't leave. So they are still an employee of Lander County. This is the transparency for our taxpayers because they are entitled to know what the people working here are getting. You know, we approve the budget for merit increases and you know, maybe somebody gets one percent, maybe somebody gets two percent. Is, we need that to be transparent and visible to the public. And, and I don't really care if you have a problem with this Ted, because this is the board's decision. This is, this is.
Commissioner, you cannot, you cannot take over another elected per- uh person's power. You can't do it. You have no authority to do that, so I don't, I don't care if you don't care what I think.
Well, we're not taking over another elected official's power. We're making transparency to the public and to the taxpayers of Lander County.
An elected official goes in front of the board, and they should, to create a position and then to fund it. That's the end of it, in that department. I'm not talking about your department.
Well.
I'm not talking about your department.
And, and, and I'm not really either. I'm just saying that, you know, we're the ones to make the decisions here. I also, not saying it hasn't happened, I don't recall too many elected officials coming up and saying, gee, I don't want my employees on the payroll change request. Your department and the county managers are the ones that are making an issue out of this.
I was asked for a legal opinion and I'm giving it. That's it. I don't have any personal.
This.
I was asked to give a legal opinion today, Commissioner, and that's all I'm doing. So don't be pointing your finger wagging at me. That's my job and that's what I did.
And you know, the thing about legal opinion, the legal opinion of Lander County is generated from the DA's office. You can go opinion shopping, but it doesn't matter. The DA's opinion is what rules the day. And I s- I see this as an attempt, an attempt to micromanage. That's how I see it. We do not have the authority to tell elected officials what to do with their payroll change request or anything else. It's a separate deal.
I have something to say.
Kathy?
My is, one of my issues with this is before it was changed, I respect what everyone is saying, but before it was changed to stop being done, it should have been brought back in front of the commissioners for it to do what we're doing right now. I think that when the problem came up and it was discovered that it should have come and not just stopped, because then you're violating code and we are picking and prodding at which codes we're going to follow. If we're going to change it, then it, it needs to go through the right change, chain to be changed, not just decided to change and not anybody come in front of the commissioners. That's one of my big issues.
Thank you Kathy. Hey Art, I have something to say. So first off, Ted, thank you for your legal opinion, cause that's what we're doing. It's government, it's all us of power. And I wanna, I wanna correct something that Art says, that we're trying to micromanage. We're not. If that's the case, Art, we should do away with the payment of bills every single meeting. We shouldn't even look at them because it's micromanaging. It's approved in the budget, so why do we need to see them?
Calm down.
No, you understand what I'm saying?
No.
This is ridiculous.
No, I don't understand what you're saying. You don't understand that you're opening up the o- opportunity to, for somebody to file agreements. You're opening up the opportunity to micromanage. Why do that?
At the point that we try to, uh on these payroll change requests, we're looking at just strictly the finance side of it. There's a, there's a change, we get to look at it and say, yep, everything looks good, good. We approve it all. No, that's different than we do the bills, Art.
Brian, Brian, no.
We like to pull this bill because you have a question on it.
Here's where your argument falls down. We approve the budget. As long as the person's job description and payment is within what it needs to be, it's none of our business. Once we approve the budget and, and the position, it's up to the elected officials to do what they do. Okay, Judy?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um a- and again, I, I totally agree with Brian, um a- and Kathy and I think there's another issue that we need to stop and look at is we follow what ordinances we want. We pick and choose and do what we want. And so we have, we have county employees that just disregard our county ordinances is, you know, that's wrong. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we um do not abolish the Lander County Code two point zero four, point zero two four payroll change requests contained in Title II Administration and Personnel and that these payroll change requests go back on the agenda.
Give it a second. Um I'll wait for my second. Let's get some public comment.
Mr. Forgeron has given a legal opinion.
Yeah.
Oh, our legal opinion? Mr. Forgeron will give us our legal opinion?
I believe that's up to the district attorney. I'm just a funky.
Hi, Forgeron, Deputy District Attorney. I'm appearing before the board today because this particular item uh is of some concern to me. I have sixteen years of experience as this county's elected district attorney. During that time, I have advised the county commissioners as to various issues, some of which include finance. I have maintained a consistent position in this regard and I still have that position. And that is, uh, the county commission, of course, sets the overall policy issues for Lander County and for the employees that you, over which you have jurisdiction. And it reinforces that with the overall financial obligation uh that you have to the county in constructing the county's budget and allowing the various department heads a portion of that budget within which to operate. There is a limitation on your ability to control that budget once the overall decision has been made. So if you allocate a certain amount of money to an elected official and a portion of that uh is obviously uh salaries along with other items, you have then allowed that elected official room within which to manage that budget, which you no longer have. So I'll, I'll pick on Sadie for a minute. Um if Sadie within her budget has a sufficient amount of money uh to give Kathy a thousand dollar a month raise, she's entitled to do that. Your check on that is at the next budget hearing, you can look at that and say, oh my gosh, Sadie, that was only half enough or that was twice too much and we're going to adjust your budget up or down with that in mind. What you cannot do is approve or disapprove that raise at the time it's given. You do not have the adj- the jurisdiction or the authority to do that. So if a payroll change request comes before you that says this particular employee has been granted this particular raise by this elected official or department head, there's no point to that because you can't deny it or change it. You just don't have the authority to do that. What if you did? So Sadie gives Kathy a raise and doesn't give Sally a raise. Are you gonna raise Sally now? So because you think she should make as much as Kathy? Uh are you gonna deny Kathy's raise because Sally didn't get her raise? You can't do it. So why would that come before you? It makes no sense.
So, um counselor, as you stated before, you know, you, you were our district attorney for many, many, many years. I don't know when this, um, this code was, ordinance was made. But I guess my question is, is you were our legal counsel for all those years and never said a word about it. And all of a sudden, it's becoming an issue and you're stand, sitting there and, and arguing against it? What changed?
With all due respect, Commissioner, you're wrong. I have maintained a consistent position throughout my entire tenure as district attorney of this county. Whenever it was inquired of me, I have informed the then existing county commissioners exactly in the same fashion as I have at this point in time. I'm not the district attorney anymore and haven't been for the last, what is it, five years now? Uh there's been someone else in that office. If you need a legal opinion, that's the person you go to. Um I'm here today because the issue has now come up. Uh it wasn't mine to raise in the first instance, but it has now come up and I want to give you the benefit of what my experience has been over a long period of time. I have nothing personal on this. I don't have a raise pending.
Counselor, I have a question. Just a clarification, and I understand what you're saying as far as elected officials. How does that affect like our county manager and the folks that, that he oversees? Is that something that still should come before us?
That brings up an entirely new question. Uh, my feeling on that is when you have approved a budget and you have delegated to a person, um, hiring and firing authority, you then become an appellate board. The, um, raise that that particular individual who's subordinate to the department head has been given doesn't come to you for approval or disapproval at that point. The, you have overall authority over the department head in certain areas, um, contract negotiations, um, just like an elected official approval or disapproval of an overall budget at some point in time. But if the individual who was, uh, denied a raise, for example, um, or even who was given a raise, uh, is dissatisfied with that, then they would, uh, file a grievance and it is certainly conceivable that at some point in time, you would hear that grievance as an appellate board. So, you don't approve it or disapprove it in the first instance. You have to wait sort of in the background to determine whether or not your appellate authority is invoked. You're also, uh, in a situation where, uh, you are bound by a number of CBAs. Um, and what are you gonna do with those? Are you gonna violate a CBA because-
I went to CBA.
Collective bargaining agreement. Uh, do you wanna get the union involved in it? Talk about grievances. You really have some grievances.
So, basically, it's handled the same way. We give the budget and, and our county manager then can set whatever type of payroll that he wants for that person if we, as long as it's in the budget, we're okay.
If you've given him that authority in the first instance, yes.
So, let me ask you a question here. The way I control what is going on in Denise's office, in Leslie's office, is how I vote. As a commissioner, I approve their budget and what they do in their office is their business, not mine. As long as they're within budget, that's all I need to be concerned about, right?
That's about all you can be concerned about as a commissioner. As a voter, you're free to reelect them or dump right.
And under the Freedom of Information Act, you can get any information about a public employee you want, right? Except like write-ups and stuff like that.
Pretty much, and, and Transparent Nevada, as you mentioned, is another source.
That, I have a question. If that's the, if, uh, we only have it at budget time, and bear my stuttering, you guys, I'm trying to be able to say what I need to say. If that's the case, then why, and I'm not saying this in a sarcastic way, if it sounds like that, that's not- If that's the way it is, then why do we bother, bother to ratify their bills? Because that's how they're spending their funds. Why do we do that then? Sorry.
No, that's perfectly good question. Um, you have an overall fiduciary duty to the county. And part of that would be, for example, if a elected official gives a raise that exceeds their budget, then you could certainly step in at that point in time. Um, but those routine payroll change requests are not something that, that you have authority over.
By the hiring, like, even the visual part of not being able to do anything with it, but with a new hire, just the, so they know for the who is being hired, that falls the same way. Not being able to vote if you can hire them or not, just the information that they're being hired. Does that make sense?
Well, normally, I would expect that the, um, person who's doing the hiring, the department head or the elected official, would come before the board to inform you of that. Um, you would already have approved the position and would have funded the position. So, once the, that's done, then the department head or the, the elected official is the one who has authority to make a determination as to who to hire for that position and within the overall budget at what, uh, particular, uh, salary that person would start out at.
Which I respect. I understand that. But the proper way to have done it would have been this way to begin with, but he brought back in front of the commission and have it changed this way instead of it just stopped, considering it was a county code to begin with? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry.
Instead, yeah, because of the county code being in place, following it and then just stopping it. Instead of just stopping, it should have come back in front of the county commissioners to have it fixed to begin with.
Um, if I understand correctly, that's basically where it is now.
Oh, I, I know, but it had, where this all came from was is because it was stopped and not brought back in front of the board, I think, is why it got back, put back on.
That's exactly correct, Kathy. Was, hi, what she, uh, hi, what she's saying is that, uh, the, this has been now, correct me if I'm wrong, any other commissioners, but they have been left off our agendas for several months.
Two years.
For how long?
Go, well, no, going on a year, over a year.
And it was not brought to the commission to do that. It was just done. And that's, that's what she's saying, that it's a county ordinance that's expected to be followed. And it should have been at that point brought to this board and addressed, and it wasn't. It was just automatically pulled off despite my saying, I want them back on, I want them back on. Just flagrant, no, just, uh, ignoring the, the ordinance. That's what she's trying to say. Am I correct?
Yeah, that it should have just been brought at that moment when they didn't, when it was realized or they wanted it off, just to bring it forward at that time instead of just stopping doing it.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't have anything to do with that.
Oh, no, no, I did that, uh, that, that.
Keith? I have two things to bring up. One is we need to talk to the-
I'm sorry, Sadie's been sitting there waiting for public comment.
Well, this is not a public comment. Keith, proceed, please. This has been a hot topic. I understand that.
Do you have your mic on?
Thank you. This has been a hot topic. I understand that, and there's been some stones cast at me. And this was discussed before we took it off with Kathy and Patsy, that the legal opinion was to take it off from Pool Pack as well as the district attorney. So, I didn't just take it off of the agenda. It was discussed with the chair and the vice chair at the time, okay? The other thing is that this, uh, was also discussed with the union. And the union is completely against this, and I'm speaking on Phil Herring's behalf. He can't be here. You can call him if you like. Union is completely against this because we're putting names into the public, which is a personnel issue, which would require a closed session. Now, when we do our, our, our payroll, uh, our collective bargaining raises, that's over a hundred and fifty closed sessions we would have to discuss each and every one of those individually. So, I, I wanna make sure that the board understands, I didn't just pull these off. It was discussed before I did it. I didn't just advert, uh, uh, just say, oh, we're done, we're not gonna do it. I don't do that. And it was discussed with the union as well, and the union is, is against these going on there. So, you want them back on, I don't care. I, I, I understand that. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. You wanna see what's going on. But as the deputy DA said, you approve the job descriptions. I don't just, we don't just make a job description up. You approve the salary range of those job descriptions. So, what I'm seeing and, and it is, this is to see who's being hired. And there has been instances in the past, I can think of two times, when a payroll change request was pulled because of the name on the paper, twice. And I believe you did sit on the board at that time, Commissioner Allen.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. Uh, so, thanks for the comments. Thanks, Art. So, first off, I'm, and I'll state it again, I'm not asking for names. When I was a commissioner for the first four years with Hi as our legal, it was, it was, it was numbers that were assigned.
May I, may I address that real quick so I don't forget?
Yes, yes.
So, we did use, we did, in the past, we did numbers. It was the employee na- uh, number. That is correct. An NRS did come out, and Commissioner Allen, uh, you were advocating for that, that we go to names. So, we, that's when we went to names. We went from employee numbers to names. And then it went to, we shouldn't even be putting them on there. The oth- the other two counties, the closest counties, Humble, Elko, they don't do, they don't do them. It was checked on. I can't say speak for ou- outside other counties, but I did check with them. Anyway, I just wanted to address why we went from ID numbers to names and so forth.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I appreciate the fact that you talked to Kath- Ca- Kathy and Patsy, but you can't pull an ordinance or stop using an ordinance because two commissioners outside of a public board says to do that.
And I will take the blame for that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, and that's what I'm upset about, is that that ordinance was passed by a majority vote. Two commissioners don't get to say, take it off.
Okay, and I'll take the heat for that, Commissioner. That was my short form.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can take the heat for that too, since I was cheering at the time, and I did not know that there was an ordinance. The Pool Pack said, no, we should take it off. We shouldn't be doing that, and that's the DA's legal opinion. And that's when we said, okay, it's coming off. So, um, everybody's absolutely right. We should be making this decision. We didn't, but we have all the information now, um, and it was handled improperly. And, and, and I'll do the buck stops here, 'cause I did not say, oh, is this an ordinance? I'm so sorry. We have to put it before everybody. So, with that, um, uh, are you, there, there's no second on your motion, Judy.
Okay, I've got some, so, if the NRS changes and it affects county ordinances, you stop doing what now the NRS says is improper, and then you should bring that obsolete ordinance forward to the board, like we're doing today, to have it removed. Am I right?
Yes, if, if we find out that that's happening. This was discovered by me when I was asked for a legal opinion. If you're asking if I, with a microscope, look at every, every law change by the, by the Nevada legislature and apply it to every ordinance, no, I don't have time and I don't have the manpower for that. But when I'm asked for a legal opinion, that's all I give. I don't give my personal opinion. I give a legal opinion. And the legal, and the legal status in Nevada now is that we have, we can't put a number or we violate the open meeting laws. We have to put the name. And Commissioner Allen was right when she said that. We have to put the names. And if you put the names, then you have to have a closed meeting, and then you have to give them ten days' notice. And you have to do all that for every one of them.
I understand that. Sadie, you're waiting patiently. Thank you.
I don't mind sending by. Hi, Sadie Solomon, Lander County Clerk. I might just have a couple of comments and, and questions. So, for instance, when we submit our budget, um, as far as elected officials and our, the majority of our employees are union, we budget for their merit increase or even a step upgrade. Also, um, with talking and passed with one of the union reps, of course, they are never gonna disagree if you choose to increase an employee's pay above that step increase or that merit increase. So, what my question is, is when we submit, um, our budgets, we submit it per, uh, the union contract on what those stepping grades are. But like Hi had stated, and hopefully I understood incorrectly, if I did choose to give a little bit of a higher raise for a staff, uh, that has more knowledge, um, at that time, our budget doesn't reflect those monies. And so, can or should elected officials do additional, say, five thousand in there to cover that if that was to occur, occur, um, you know, for additional increase or what have you? So, say for instance, if, um, my staff gets thirty-six cents an hour, thirty-eight cents an hour, that's roughly around nineteen dollar an hour, uh, position. But a salary employee gets budgeted and they get a, say, a thousand or five thousand dollar increase. So, if it's a five thousand dollar increase at twenty-six payrolls, they're getting a two dollar forty cent. And these are just rough figures, uh, increase. So, what my question is, as an elected official, when we submit our budget, should we ask, you know, for additional, say, five thousand, if we feel that that employee does have that coming? Or otherwise, you're pulling the funds from another item and then that, you know, creates havoc. So, that's what my question is, is we submit them, we go off of what our union contract is, their merit increase, if there's a step upgrade. But like I stated, the union did say, they're never gonna, you know, tell you, no, you can't give an employee additional increase to that. So, my question is, is just when we come to the board of commissioners and we have an amount that gets printed out, Cindy has a program that tells you what your wages are overall for your staff. And so, you know, ca- should we or can we, or is that my bad for not submitting additional, you know, five thousand in there just for that cushion for possible? Does that make sense?
The quick answer is, it's your budget.
Right, but we don't, we don't-
I believe the policies and procedures cover that.
Okay.
Policies and procedures outline your budget.
Right, beyond the merit increase though.
Beyond the merit increase, if you don't have it in your budget, you have to ask permission from the people who run the budget, and that's you.
Right, but see, what my point is, is that it's a union position. So, we just, like, I submit, um, the title and what their rate is and those increases, and I don't, I submit additional funds. Do you see what I'm saying, Ken?
Yeah, but you, you, you can't do that unless you already know you're going to give them the raise. Then you would budget for it.
You have to do that, the budget process.
Right, absolutely. But see, my formulas go into Cindy, and so Cindy has it in a spreadsheet type deal. Is Cindy here today?
Maybe Judy can-
Um, and so, those are the money. She comes up with my total amount.
Sadie, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
This isn't on the agenda.
Okay.
It's not an agenda item.
Okay, so I'm just letting you know that there, there's additional issues.
Right, no, that's, that's for-
Thank you.
But I do have a question regarding-
Thanks.
Sorry, I'll take one.
No, you're fine.
Is, when you submit your budget and on the payroll, you have the person's name on that sheet, don't you?
And it comes, yeah, and it comes through four packets.
Yep.
So, it has a name. It will say their job title. And if they're an executive secretary, one, two, three, and then I don't put a number there because Cindy has it to where she plugs it in, or used to on the old ADS system, she plugs in those numbers.
Right, but I'm just, what I wanted-
So, I'm never submitting numbers-
Yeah.
For the employees, 'cause they're union positions, but yes.
I just wanted to know, is on the elected officials' budget request for payroll, is they have their employees' names on that?
So, we need to, may need to change that then, those that may do it?
Any more questions, any more comments? Okay, Kathy has one.
I didn't, it's not a question. I just wanted to say, I didn't realize that it was an ordinance either, and I'm going to also own that part of it, 'cause I didn't know, um, in giving direction. So, I will absolutely own that as well.
Okay, so, we're gonna clear it up now?
Okay, um, we have, uh, Keith? I, I just wanted to, to speak a little bit about our union contracts. We have to stay within our union contracts whenever we give a raise. We can't just arbitrarily say, uh, we're gonna put some, we're gonna give somebody ten percent because we like them. We have to stay within our, and it's in our policies. You guys would see that.
And in the budget, and in the budget.
I was in the budget. I was unaware that people, that you were putting your names. It's supposed to be by position, not name.
Yeah, there's several, if we wanted to go back through the packets.
Anyway, I, I just wanted to-
Sadie Solomon, Lander County Clerk. Also, um, with that, and I think I'm hearing Keith right, um, a couple of years back, I did talk to, so, we do have to stay in compliance with the union contract. But the union representative did say they would not ever deny, or if there was something that came up that somebody that's been here for this many years has this much experience, and you choose to give them more than that step increase, the union's not gonna deny or they're gonna back up that employee for that increase. So-
Yeah, but I'll tell you what they will do. They'll come back and they'll want more for somebody else.
Right, right. So, anyway, just to let you know, that's what was stated. Right, right. So anyway, just to let you know, that's what was stated.
So Judy made a motion. We don't have a second yet on, on the floor. Keith has something else to say? Keith has something else to say.
I just wanna say, when we do the budgets, when they come to you, they show the cost of living, which was agreed on in the union contract at two percent. The merit increases are up to two percent. There, anybody, they're not supposed to go over the two percent. That's what this board gave. Was two percent cost of living and up to a two percent of your merit raise. So if they, if somebody decides to give somebody, o- other than a salary employee, a, a ten percent raise, they are exceeding their authority that was given to them by this board.
So, so what we, so what's happening here is you can't put anybody with a CBA in the agenda. We're, we're closing in on a specific group, it sounds like.
Salaryed employees.
Yeah, salaried employees. Okay, so are we ready now?
Yeah, so, um, thank you for everybody. I mean, I'm going to second the motion. Um, I'd like for them to go back on and I'm going to continue my look into this. And if I find myself being incorrect, then I will be the first to put it back on the agenda to get the old ordinance pulled. But at this point, from this, from what I have checked out, um, we're perfectly fine doing it. So that's. I second.
I have my information. Sadie Solomon for the record. Is that an employee number or, or name? 'Cause when I go to submit, with the number, when I go to submit my staff or the payroll change request, I needed to know as an elected official what to submit to HR.
Right, well, hopefully, if you could provide me with that interest, Ted, so I can read it myself.
The open meeting law.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, I'll look that up.
Yes, so. Well, the point is, we have a current county ordinance that's being violated. So that's what I'm saying. We, that goes back into tax. Because this board did not, did not dissolve it. So that's what I'm saying.
It's not being violated because it's been superseded by NRS.
We said, there's an ordinance in the book, Art. We're not, we're not entering for ordinance.
I spoke to this, and I said that, that when the NRS dictates something different than the ordinance, the ordinance needs to come back so that we're told that it's obsolete. And that's what we're doing today.
It has to be approved by this board. Yeah. So that, anyway, my sec- I, I second, so.
I would like to know what ordinance or, or what NRS is superseding this ordinance.
Well, it's, it's in the open meeting law and Ted's gonna forward that to Brian. Do you wanna copy?
No, I know.
It's gonna be somewhere.
Well, I, I, 'cause you had stated there were some NRSs that, that said these payroll change requests were in direct violation of that interest.
Because of the open meeting law violation.
Okay, so if you could provide that, Ted, that would be great. So I can read.
And Commissioner Allen.
It's on here somewhere. Huh? The NRS is on there somewhere.
Patsy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a clarification. So the motion on the floor is that we, um, we do not abolish.
Right.
Right, we disapprove. And that's been seconded. Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Did she say aye?
I don't know.
Yes, she did.
Aye, okay. Opposed? Aye?
Nay.
There's three for it and two opposed. And, uh, our break for lunch. Okay.
All right, Sadie, I had a question. I'm sorry.
You're fine. Sadie Solomon, Lander County Clerk. Um, is this the only thing that we're supposed to have in the packet? It's just that ordinance? Or are you looking at something else that we're supposed to have? Kathy stated that there was some.
Well, then, she said that, I think what she referred to is that the, the county code is on the agenda. I didn't see an NRS.
Okay, I just was confirming that I had what you guys had.
So I have one last question. Will we be breaking open meeting law by doing this at the next meeting?
Can I?
If we put the name down, no.
Right.
No.
But then you're violating personnel.
Well, then you're going to be liable. And, and.
I just want the people that voted for this to understand that they are the ones responsible for the backlash.
And, and sue or whatever. And that's, I'm just giving you the legal advice that there's possibility that there's liability will accrue because of this ordinance. That's all.
Okay, Judy Allen has something to say.
Is, is, don't hold me to this because I don't have it memorized. But I believe in the open meeting law, when it comes to employees, is when you, um, put them on the agenda to discuss their character, competency, whatnot. It doesn't mention anything about their pay.
The legal opinion in Lander County is that it's an open meeting violation. That's the, that's the rule.
Well, I'm just stating.
Right, so with the numbers, I'm sorry, Judy, go ahead. I apologize.
No, what, what, and maybe I'm wrong, what, what Ted's implying is that, or, or, I don't know, Commissioner, if this is what you're implying, that, that we would have to, um, give everybody notice if we put the payroll change request in the, on the, in the packet, that we would have to give everyone notice to put them in the packet.
If we put their names on it.
But we have to put their names on it because that's part of the open meeting law. But the thing is, is if you, if you read the open meeting law and the statute on personnel and it talks about to consider the character, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, at an employee, it does not mention the payer, payment. We're not considering the employee's character. We're just looking at what they're getting paid. And so I don't see where that falls into that statute.
I'd, I'd have to look that up. I would, if you're asking me for a legal opinion as a board, I'll look that up specifically.
Denise?
Hi, Denise Fortune for the record. Judy, I just wanted to clarify, when you just stated you wanted to look at, is it just look at, or are you saying that you guys would have a right to oppose it?
And Denise, I'm sorry for that because I, I don't know how I would else have stated it, but, um, I think it's more, you know, maybe we could've gone back and, and made the motion that we don't take action on it. Is I want the transparency to the, to the, the citizens. I don't wanna, you know, I, I guess apparently, yeah, there has been cases that we've discussed someone's payroll. But realistically, you know, that's, that's not something we really wanna do. And I'll agree to that. But I want it to be visible to the public.
And I, I'm not saying that the public should know because, again, we do have Transparent Nevada and people can go on there and see what everybody makes. My, my main comment to this is, we have two Lander County legal eagles right here. And I don't agree with going against them. It's my own personal opinion. And I probably shouldn't even be up here because as judicial, it doesn't really affect me. But it does affect everybody else in here.
Denise, can I, I'm sorry. I just wanted, um, is Transparent Nevada, um, I, I don't know if you can go in and look and see how much somebody makes by the hour, which really doesn't matter, but still. Um, I think, you know, with, with another agenda item discussing, you know, a member of the public came up and said, "Hey, this is my money and I don't think you should be spending it like this," is, or my taxpayer money. Um, is these people, you know, we, we do owe the taxpayers, um, this transparency. And, you know, when the employees get the raises, you know, when it comes before us for, okay, here's the, the cost of living or this is the merit. And, you know, the salary employees, you know, when they come up and, and, and they're getting, you know, a chump for, it's for the, the taxpayers.
But I believe that decision rests in the elected officials' hands, not the Lander County commissioners. Our budget rests with you guys. You guys have their right to approve most, not all, most of the budgets. Okay? And so if the money's in our budget, I believe it's up to the elected officials to decide what employees get what. I'm not saying absolutely don't put it in there. That's your guys' decision. I just think us as elected officials, it's our job also to answer to the taxpayers. The taxpayers voted us in. They're trusting us to do our budgets and to bring a clear and concise budget to you guys and not go crazy and not waste their money. And then if they have a problem, it, that's not on you guys, I don't believe. I believe that's on us, as the elected officials. It's not on you, it's on us. So, again, I just mainly wanted to say, there's two guys in here I've gone to for over twenty-four years with the court. And I would not go against anything of their opinion, is, is my opinion, so.
Well, we'll see if there's any open meeting violations filed.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Commissioner?
We're gonna break for lunch from now till one fifteen. Keith, make it quick.
I will try to. I was hoping we could hit up number six real quick, the air med thing, for just a clar- some clarification.
Okay, let's try to get six done.
I think it can be done.
Morning Commissioners. Gina Fasenetti, Air Med Care Network Manager for the record. Um, I understand you're all hungry. I'll try to keep it brief. Um, Keith and I had a meeting earlier in the week, uh, and so I think that I am pretty clear on, on what you guys need clarification for, um, on the agreement that you voted to put through last, last meeting. Um, so I think a large part of this comes from the fact that basically no one's really ever explained to you the purpose of membership and, um, kind of how the air ambulance works in general. Um, so if I'm hearing him correctly, uh, what you guys are looking for in a contract with an air ambulance company is a well-trained, well-equipped ambulance crew to respond to the emergencies in the area. Um, financial protection for not only the residents but the county itself, like keeping money in the area. Uh, best possible coverage for the area and the, the best program that you can get for your money. It's, it's a combination of all these. Is that correct?
Does this need to be read into the record? I just said number six. This question.
Oh, yeah, you need to read the agenda item.
Thank you. I, I do have a clarification, um, that I would like please because I understand where we were coming from, but I thought the amount per person, and we had an average of six thousand people roughly. So six thousand people, um, all of a sudden now we owe sixty-six thousand dollars to cover six thousand people.
Okay, Commissioner, the, the agenda item needs to be read in the record prior to any further discussion.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Agenda item number six, possible action. Excuse me? Possible action, approve, disapprove, revisiting and obtaining clarification of the proposal from Edmare, Edmare Ca- Med Care Network for nationwide coverage in the amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand thirty-one dollars and seventy cents.
So the clarification that I wanted to put out and I asked Gina to come, there were, there were two things that seemed I get a lot of quest- that I got a lot of questions on. And we discussed it. Number one was this is a nationwide coverage. The, the perception out there is that they are covered one hundred percent nationwide, which is true, but it's also not true. It's true in the sense that if they get one of the assets from Air Care Med Network, they do not get a bill. But what I wanna make clear and on the record and for, if, if you were ever asked about it, there is a possibility they could get a bill if they don't get one of the assets from Air Care Med Network outside of our area. The perception that I've been getting is that they're covered a hundred percent nationwide. Well, they're not, people aren't. They have over three hundred assets in the, in nationwide, so their chances are pretty good that they will get in one of their assets. But I don't want people to think that they are, there's one hundred percent chance they're not gonna get a bill because the possibility is out there. The other clarification I wanted to make has to do with, uh, Gina, help me, the Fallon.
Oh, uh, Careflight.
Careflight.
The assets that are covered under Careflight.
Assets that are covered under Careflight are their fixed wing, not their helicopters. So if we do get a helicopter in here, which is, I don't know that we've even ever got one from them, maybe once or twice, there, they might.
Yes, we do.
Okay, they might get a bill from them. Those were the only two clarifications I wanted to make. There's a possibility, if you're outside of the area, you're in Montana, you get, or, and you get flown out and it's not one of their assets, there's a possibility of a bill. But like I said, there's over three hundred Air Care Med Network in the flight or in the program.
I would make a request that you write something up and put it in the paper after we finalize what we're doing with this.
Yes, this was, like I said, this was just for clarification. I want, I, I don't want the board to be uh, not on purpose, but mislead the public by saying, "Oh, yeah, we've got a hundred percent coverage nationwide." We don't. Or potentially get a bill from s- a, a carrier outside of Air Care Med Network. And the Fallon group is only covered with the fixed wing. They have one helicopter, I think. But they also have many half helicopters close by that we normally get.
Right, so to touch on that, uh, that's always been the thing, the, these membership programs work, uh, if you use our assets. The same as any other company, even without a membership program. If we were flown in an area they covered, they're not gonna cover our bill either. So the whole purpose of this, um, agreement that you guys entered into is to give the best possible chance, uh, for your people not to get balance bill if they're flown.
Okay, Gina, let's go back to my original question then, because I was concerned about the amount. And, and if we're looking at sixty-six thousand dollars, this is one year, right? One year?
That is yes.
That's a thousand dollars a person?
Sixty-six thousand dollars, uh, for the one year and you have the six thousand residents.
I mean, if I came to you as an individual and said, "I wanna buy an individual membership," your fee wasn't a thousand dollars per person.
No, it was three hundred.
Well, how did we get to sixty-six thousand with only six thousand and?
That's, that's done by their corporate headquarters and I think she's getting the formula now for, for you guys, how they, how they, uh.
Okay, but you understand where I'm coming from. Our kids' coverage for three hundred dollars nationwide and all of a sudden we buy it as a county? That's some discount.
Okay, let's see.
We may have to postpone this still after lunch. You're really cutting it.
Well, and I, I didn't realize it would take so long. I just wanted clarification, so.
I did.
I did too. I wanted clarification too.
So if that's what you guys wanna do, then we can break for lunch. That's what it's gonna commit.
I, I, I think you're actually figuring out your math completely wrong. So what I was doing is pulling up my calculator. Because if you look at sixty-six thousand dollars versus a population of six thousand people, just say, you're looking at eleven dollars a person per year. Commissioner?
That's right. She's correct.
Uh, so you're looking at, uh, this nationwide coverage for, um, you know, between ten and twelve dollars, uh, if you look at the population that you have here, uh, for all of our bases, not just the ones here locally. So what you have now, the difference between the agreement that you have in place now, your partial, um, is if they are in Lander County only. Rent, Lander County residents flown out of Lander County, they are covered, right? No balance bill, no money out of pocket.
Right, and then we asked if they could be covered anywhere in the state?
You, you did.
And then we went to, no, we're gonna send some of these folks, perhaps you're gonna take them to Salt Lake City? Or then we have to have nationwide coverage.
Uh, well, yeah, you would have to have our full footprint. So we have over three hundred and twenty bases. We're the largest membership-based program in the country. Uh, so the full municipal site plan, the difference between that mainly was A, it covers them for if they're out of your county and one of our assets fly them. And B, it came up last time, one of the commissioners had asked in your current membership, uh, agreement, if someone has zero insurance, they're not insured. They get billed at the Medicare level.
No, we understand that, yes.
Um, that also goes away in the new. So that was another clarification that we wanted to make. Uh, but yeah, it's not a thousand dollars a person. It's actually eleven, somewhere in there.
We, we approve this later?
Yeah, we approve.
Okay, we're gonna break for lunch now.
Thank you.
Are you done?
See y'all later.
We're leaving. This meeting for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, back to order. Hello, everyone. Art had to leave us for the rest of the day, so we, um, we'll actually, we're on number two.
But they're not here.
Um, Patsy, actually, I'm sorry.
And he's not back yet. And he's not back yet.
I think, I'm not sure if that's her. Do you want to jump to that, to do that one? Cause she's been sitting and waiting?
Everybody's been sitting and waiting.
Well, I realize that, but it's number eleven.
Okay. It's been a long day and we sincerely appreciate you folks that have been with us all morning long. So, to skip ahead, let's see, J U B is not here, so let's move over to number eleven, actually. We will recess the Board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners and the Lander County Sheriff. Number eleven, Sheriff's Office for possible action regarding Lander County liquor license for Taqueria El Gavilon. I'm sorry if I did that really poorly for you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Taqueria El Gavilon.
I just had a question, Robert, have you done all the background on, everything's good? Sorry Judy.
The type of business?
Uh, Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, um, we processed the application and we didn't find any immediate disqualifiers. The only question we had, which would be a question for the District Attorney's Office, is I didn't see um, anything specific in the ordinance that allows for this type of license.
This is for an off-site license only?
This is, my understanding is a mobile type of, uh,
Food truck. And we don't certainly have an art ordinance to cover Kathy. We certainly don't have an art ordinance, anything that covers like a food truck. We have on and off sale and then temporary licenses. We don't have one that covers mobile.
Mobile per se, and that was my question, was the type of business, so it's a mobile type of business, so.
But it would still be off-site, right? You're buying it and taking it away from the business or?
No, no, off-site sale means that they don't drink it there, they're just, it's to go.
Yeah, and this one is to drink it there if they wish, but there could be.
Either or.
They could, they could change locations at at whim or at will. And I don't think our ordinance covers that.
It, from the person who did liquor licenses for countless years, that's not how the the ordinance is formed. It's for gross, like the off-sale is like grocery stores or liquor stores where you go in and you purchase it and you take it home. On-sale is like you are at a restaurant and you, um, drink, have o- open containers there and you can actually buy a few there, a six-pack of beer at a restaurant and take it home. So, that's why they have on-sale slash off-sale, or you have the temporary. And those are the ones who already have the licenses, who are doing a one-day event at the park. But we don't have like a catering license or a mobile license because one of the stipulations is at any time, law enforcement can go in and check the premises to make sure there's not any underage drinking. So, it's a little sticky on that.
Right, and they have to make sure that that license is posted in a conspicuous place and if they don't know the location, they can't do that.
We can't check it, so I don't know how we can authorize this.
I just had a question, um, we don't have a specific code that addresses this, but for lack of a code, um, i- it's like, you know, maybe having a law, is you have a law that says what you can and can't do. But if you don't have a law that says anything, you can do anything.
Right, and and normally I would agree with you, Commissioner, because if there's nothing that prohibits it, then they're entitled to do the, except in this case, uh, as as Kathy points out, uh, the licenses must be put in a conspicuous place and and the Sheriff's Office needs to know the location. And if they move around the location, they don't fall within what we do have.
Okay, well, I guess my other question, I understand that now when you're saying moving around. I mean, I could see posting it conspicuously, you know, in the food truck somewhere, but but then you're right, so if, you know, they're sitting by one of the grocery stores one day and maybe the other one the next day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's where I see the the possible problem.
Well, the other concern is if if they're eating and they hand them, um, beer that isn't opened, they can open it right there and and drink it while they're eating and that would be on-site. So, we still have a problem, so, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Gavilon, it doesn't appear that we can, we can assist you with that.
Excuse me, is do, are we able to, um, redo our our update, our ordinances, the our our ordinance on that head?
We're looking at that today, aren't we? Isn't that on the agenda?
Is it that ordinance or?
If we wanted to, but the question is, do we want to? We don't have any control.
Well, that there has come up instances, like we have people who want to do catering, that come in that want to do catering and they can't do, they can't hire a caterer like for weddings and things like that. So, I mean, there are different things that can be looked at, um, that we can't solve today, that should be looked at with this license. One of the things before I retired, I wanted to get done was this ordinance looked at, I just didn't understand the technical way of doing that, but I think there should be some updating in this. But the Sheriff's Office ultimately, you know, has the opinion of what they think, cause it's it's underneath them. They have to, uh, be the ones that go in and make sure everything is okay.
And that's number fifteen on the agenda today.
Okay.
Judy?
So, I do have a a question, I guess, is this mobile truck is going to be parked on private property, basically, I mean, if they park it at, I mean, I don't know, not not always because I know that they have the the mobile for, they take over to the school for lunches and I think the alcohol club does that, but you know, the ones, I don't know if it's the same one you see, it'll be parked by by Midway a lot, and that's on private property. So, how would that work into this also?
Well, it would, if they have permission to be there and to and to sell food and alcohol from the owner of the private property, then they would go get the license and they would use that location as a permanent location. But that's not what they applied for.
Yeah.
They applied for something we just don't have right now, and we can discuss it more thoroughly when we open up item fifteen. Unless you wanna open it up now and discuss it, but.
No, I think for right now, we're just gonna have to say, I'm sorry, Ms. Gavilon, but that we don't have any way to to authorize that for you right now, so.
And you're more than welcome, we are discussing the ordinance as the last agenda item today, so if you'd like to be here as a part of that, if you have public comment or anything on it, okay?
And it worked out, do you, do I have to reapply?
No, you gotta please come up. And you have to turn the
Yeah, turn turn the speaker on.
And state your name in the record.
The little button right in the front.
My name's Cynthia Yala. Okay, um, would I be able to reapply, uh, something worked on, uh, my favor?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
This doesn't prohibit it, it's not one-time only. Thank you.
Thank you.
You would have to ask for a different type of remedy.
By that, I mean.
Right now, you've asked for a mobile license, which we, which the county commissioners don't have the authority to give you under our present ordinance.
Okay.
If you would like to ask for something that is permitted by our ordinance, then they'd be happy to to hear your cause.
Okay.
Or like you said, if if we do change the ordinance to allow something like this, then definitely come back and reapply.
Okay, sounds great, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board and recontinue the meeting of the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Okay, we still don't have number two.
Can I make a suggestion? We have business on it that's waiting here, could we maybe move to the the item seven?
Seven, yes, Kelly is here, right? Okay, we'll go to number seven. That's under the county manager, for possible action to approve or disapprove awarding the management services for the Mountain View Golf Course to the following bidder. And, uh, we just have one, Kelly Sonderman, DBA Overtime Sports Bar and Grill LLC. Thank you for waiting, you wanna come forward, Kelly? And then we'll ask you to turn that on for us. I know the commission's had a chance to take a look at this and you probably have some questions.
Yeah, I. Hi Kelly.
Hi.
Um, my first question is under scope of services, on item one, we're asked for the seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars as an annual to to help you compensate you to collect our fees, what's been the standard in the past?
Commissioner, under our present arrangement with BLM, we cannot do that. And matter of fact, we had to turn down an applicant for a contract, uh, last time because they wanted the county to pay them, basically, to manage, uh, and we can't do that.
So, we can't pay?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
We can't pay. All all the last one did was they received, uh, uh, they paid the county five hundred dollars a month, I believe, off the top of my head, uh, to rent the the building and and the BLM approved that, uh, which they had to approve prior, because under our present arrangement, we shouldn't even have a golf club there, Commissioner. So, we're in the process of trying to buy it, the land, or have the land given it to us under the Land Act. Then we can do whatever we want, but right now, we cannot.
Well, I thought, correct me, and other commissioners, didn't we have discussion on this? Cause I remember that we said we could move forward with this. I'm trying to recall what the, do you, does anybody recall that meeting that we had?
I remember at one time, and it was still when I first started. Um, they they'd get given a a a one-time amount as an initial startup fee because we had to do a lot of different things to it, we did do that.
We just paid for it though, we didn't give that money to them to do it.
Yeah.
We paid for it ourselves.
But that that was allowed, but um, but everything's pretty well up to date, I think now and everything, so, um.
But we could give them monthly compensation to collect on behalf of the county, couldn't you not?
No.
Why?
Because we're we're prohibited because of the deal, when the when the, when the golf course was given to the county, it, there's a reversion clause that it reverts back to them if we if we breach any of the conditions, and that's one of the conditions.
So, how are we doing with our last vendor?
Bec- they were paying us.
So, the the question, Ms. Sonderman, is that since we can't actually allow that, the seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars that you're asking for to do the paperwork for reporting to us, do you need to go back and and look at your offer again, or does?
Um, yeah, it definitely, it would change things for sure, I mean, yeah, I haven't worked it without those numbers.
Okay, because we would love to have somebody, of course, operating it, but the thing is, is we're we're giving you the property, um, basically, uh, for five hundred dollars a month.
Yes.
Um, for the rental, and we're keeping up the utilities, we're keeping up the repairs, so we're saying, we're giving you a business for the five hundred dollars. You get more than just, just the the place to do business, but you get the others, um, the offset from what we don't get, so
I understand that.
We're hoping you take another look at that, because the sooner we can open, you know, in April or so, the better it would be, but but I know from from, at least from the offer that you made, that you probably wanna think again about it.
The only strictly legal thing we can do at this point, while we're awaiting, one of the two options that that the commissioners have pursued, buying the land outright or getting it gifted to us in the Land Act, uh, would be to have the the county operate it itself. Unless, th- the BLM would agree on a short-term thing to to a proposal. And I know they won't, they've already rejected this kind of proposal, we can't pay it.
And that would take a long time to get the P- BLM to all the paperwork involved in that.
Yes, it would, Commissioner, so so the the only safe way we can do it now, to be quite honest, is to run it ourselves.
But we can't have the the restaurant and bar if we run it ourselves, can we?
We can't ha- we can have the restaurant.
Not the bar.
That, well, we we could, the county could sell liquor, this I know. They can't, we can't provide, our liability would be too excessive if we had a bartender that worked for the county and stuff like that. But if you just had a iceboxes, the so cans of, uh, beer or whatever, then then we could do it that way.
So, then I have a question, then if our restrictions were so great, why did we put this out? But would, how did we put this out for bid to begin with?
That's what I'm saying, it's that meeting that I'm referring to, that, and I'll have to pull the minutes, but I could've swore you said that, there was said on the public register that we could do it, um, and we were very close to striking a deal with BLM, so where were we at in that process?
So, I I put it out, let me, it's a two-part question, so let me, let me do both of them. Uh, Commissioner Ancho, I I put this out because we needed to get it out in order to get the golf golf club open, or the clubhouse open. The the, uh, golf course itself will be open, but we needed to get it in place so that we could have somebody out there running it. I'd had several inquiries and there was only one that was that was turned in, so that's how it went in.
And Kathy, how we put it out is in your book? There's actually a copy of the act, so I mean, it's whatever.
Okay, and and as far as, um, Commissioner Sparks, there there was some discussion on it, that we could do it, but I think what it was either left out or missed was we still have to get BLM's okay. It has to, so it's 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 the agreement that we ma- that was made with BLM twenty years ago or longer, that says, in a nutshell, it says, we can't make a profit out there. And they're not a five oh one C three, so we can't pay them for wages, it's just like the Austin Chamber, we can't give them a grant to pay their wages.
So, how are we doing with the last vendor?
They they were paying us.
They were paying us?
Yeah, so she wanted to pay us five hundred dollars a month, we could do the deal.
Oh, yeah, we just can't give her money to be her employee.
I just wanna make sure, I just, I was hearing a different message. If they're willing to rent that, then she.
And and if we get permission from BLM, per.
Did we have permission from BLM on the last vendor?
We did.
So, it's it's a doable thing then?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we have an interested party, let's get the profit, I mean, if.
No, what we're missing, Brian, is they want an additional seven thousand.
No, I understand that, she knows that, but I'm, that's what I'm saying, she goes back and refigures and they want to rent it and not get the same, and that works for her.
Right, right.
We still have a vendor that could possibly run our golf.
Yes, we're putting it back in her life.
I I was miss- hearing everything, I guess.
Okay, um, so could we, um, contract her as a a contract employee of Lander County? Would that?
The BLM said no, unless unless the county runs it or unless they will waive any problems because we're trying to buy it from them on, as long as we are not paying them.
Well, I guess I was just wondering is maybe the four hours a day, as a contract employee for of Lander County, that would get a ten ninety-nine from Lander County, um, that four hours a day would be a semi-employee of ours, and then she would have the lease for the rest of the hours.
If if she became an employee, either by contract or by by becoming a Lander County employee, then technically you could. But they'd have to be an employee.
Okay.
It it would be.
You couldn't, you couldn't do, like I said, the contract employee with a ten ninety-nine. You couldn't do, like I said, the contract employee with a $10.99?
I don't know, I don't really know, but I...
Because we use those for, you know, the clerk's office.
Right.
Which I know is, but, I mean, they're working for the county.
There's probably ways to do it, Commissioner, if you set it up right, if you do the contract right. But they would be considered Lander County employees.
But if we just went for that four hours a day?
Would that be a conflict of interest?
Well, the problem with that is that they'd want, for them to make money, they'd have to be open for more than four hours a day.
No, for sure. I'm saying is, those four hours a day that she's talking about in that first clause, that she wants the $7,300?
Oh, to get around that?
Yeah, but what we're back to, Judy, is I don't think I want to pay somebody four hours a day out there when all they have to do is collect their money and report it. I mean, I think that's overkill. I really do. So even if there were another way, right now, we're going, we're going to drop it back to them and say, if you want to rent it for $500 a month, this is great, and please think it over again, because we'd love to have you consider it.
I have a question. I know that the last people, you say leased it and got no money from the county. However, prior to that, we've had people who have gotten money to run the golf course.
Prior to that, we were doing it wrong, according to the BLM. And when we went and researched it, we found, oh my gosh, and BLM said...
But you're saying it's still wrong?
It's still wrong, but they're waiving...
But not as wrong?
Well, no, they're waiving it because we're trying to purchase.
So if I said something like, we lease it for a dollar to offset some of those costs, would that be something you would consider?
You'd have to pay...
And that still wouldn't even amount to...
No, you'd have to, you'd have to pay the, unless you're a 501(c)(3), you'd have to pay the going rate for for the lease of the building.
So what is, how is the going rate determined? Is that something we determine, or?
Can I speak on that?
Yes.
So, kind of how we came up with, I don't remember, I don't think it was 500 for the last...
It may not be.
It may, I think it might have been maybe six or something, but it was averaged that the utilities ran an average of $900 a month. Well, then when we advertised, the offers came back at 600 a month. So what this is doing is basically is covering the utilities, and it's not even covering the utilities. But that's how this money, that amount came about, was to cover...
And if the county had to pay someone to sit out there, you'd be paying them, whatever your minimum county wage would be, it would be considerably more than 825, and minimum wage is going up.
The county has to pay people to run the golf course anyway.
Yeah, honestly, think about it, Kelly, you're getting a location, all utilities are paid, and you guys are setting up and being able to operate your food, your beer, liquor, whatever it is.
I understand.
And for collection, I mean...
For $500 a month.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know your business, so I don't want to sound ignorant, but that sounds like a pretty sweet deal.
It does, but there are a lot of costs in doing business.
I understand. We could, Keith and I could talk to the BLM again and see what they will allow. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
So I have another question then. We had another applicant, you said, was, didn't qualify or something? Would we have, oh, maybe I'm missing a...
Oh, no, that was the last time.
Oh, okay.
The last go-around, they wanted us to pay them money.
Right, okay.
One applicant, we had to pay a lot of money, wasn't it?
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, I remember that, so... We wouldn't have to re-advertise this if we made some changes to it, would we? Because she's basically altering her proposal.
We probably would, because you'd be making a different proposal.
Okay.
But we should probably...
Because either way, it would be a different proposal, no matter which way we go right now.
So we would, we would probably, I would suggest that you let us talk to Mr. Shervy and ask what they would allow, or if they would prefer the county to run it.
And if you guys don't mind, I'd like to sit in on that with you, with Mr. Shervy, if that's okay.
Yeah, it's okay with me.
So I guess, I mean, I would love, Kelly, for you guys to be out there, and definitely want to make it work. You know, I was kind of coming up with the sort of contract employee just to, you know, try to get this thing going, so we can reopen in March for the golfers. Although personally, I really think that whoever's in there really should be paying, and 500 is very reasonable. Because you've got a ready-made business. So that's just my opinion. I don't think 500 is enough. I think it should be more to cover, at least the utilities, but I think we, you know, we want to make it work because we need somebody out there.
So, have you looked at the rest of it? I mean, is the rest of the proposal, are you in agreement with everything else?
I was okay with it personally. How about you folks? That's the only one I had any question on at all.
Well, I do think, you know, the kitchen and bar equipment to be professionally cleaned, you know, that probably should have been done by the previous occupants. And I don't know as though, you know, it's the county's responsible for that. Also, $5,000 for improvements.
Right.
I don't agree with that one.
We thought the equipment was up to date. We didn't know what else would be needed, I think, was the question on it. So we'd look at it, but it wouldn't be automatic.
I'd like to add, too, just on that comment, Judy, that enough to make the utilities, I think, any of our county facilities, I don't think a rec center makes money, does it?
No.
Yeah, so it's just, we're providing a service, and so I'm interested in getting it, somebody in there, under agreement, because we're going to be starting golfing soon, you know, so.
And the reason for the utility amount, it's an estimated amount, because it's one meter out there for that entire system. So we just, we had to estimate it, and I think you're right, Commissioner Allen, I believe it was 600 for the previous owner. We can look at all that, but that was based on utilities for the whole place, and then we tried to narrow it down to just the clubhouse, because it's only one meter.
So I guess my other question is, is you're going for an eight-month lease. You don't want to go for an option of year-round?
No.
I have a question. Now, the lands deal that you're going to in next week, is this is part of it, correct?
That is correct, yes. The golf course is on there. And then we do have that dollar amount from BLM. But hopefully, we can get the lands bill through sooner than...
Absolutely. I don't want to pay for land that we've put all of the money into. That was dirt when we started.
We've had that discussion, yes, it is, as was.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Well said. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, so, guess I'm worked up.
Okay, so what exactly are you, what are we saying?
Kelly?
I suggest, if I may...
I just want to, if you don't recall your proposal, it's in the packet there.
Okay.
Under item seven, so if you want to look through it.
What I would suggest, to be strictly legal, is that we talk to Mr. Shervy, and then we find out what we can put there, and then advertise specifically for that.
I know time is of the essence for the golfers in town. Is there a way that we could lease the building without the number one, you know, the item one on the proposal? Until you come back and we can revisit that, whether it has to be taken out or not? I'm just saying to get things started in order to be open by the end of March.
Yes, so basically, she's negotiating, saying if I drop the $7,000 meter, can we get going on this? I'm fine with that.
And, you know, at a later date, we can come back if the land deal goes through, and we can say, you know, can we revisit that, that or event?
It's not agendaed. Agenda is properly, to be quite candid, we can only approve or disapprove the proposal.
But can we, can we disapprove parts of it?
Well, let me figure something out. Last meeting, we, or the meeting before, with the building, our county building, we were proposed a lease by the state. We changed it and voted in that meeting on that. So what's different about Kelly?
I don't know, I don't have that agenda in front of me, Commissioner, to answer that question specifically, but I know that...
The agenda doesn't say anything about the rate. The agenda, our agenda, simply says, are we going to approve awarding the management services to the golf course to the following bidder? So when we look at the bid, we said, no.
We don't like it.
We're not going to award it for that, for all those things.
You're saying we don't have to have that?
But we can award it for this, if you want it, right? So, we take out the additional amounts for the four hours.
We still need what the BLM has prior approval.
Right, right, we know that. But regardless, even if we took it, we'd still need it.
Yes.
So we're still okay. So if you would consider taking the $7,400, whatever, out.
Number one.
Huh?
Number one.
Number one of the proposal.
Okay, I'll go back, number one. Okay, and then, the one on the amount for the extra $5,000 is negotiable, right? Depending on what you might need.
Yeah, and that's what I said in there, is just as needed. I don't know what's needed. I haven't, you know, gotten a chance to really see that.
What we're saying is, we've worked with you, we changed that, to work with you. If you need something, we certainly want to make sure that we have it for you. And we're okay with the cleaning, right?
Like I said, I don't feel it's really, I mean, it should have been cleaned when it was vacated. And when you go rent an apartment, you know, or rent a building, they're clean, but you are expected to...
But what we are right now is, if it needs cleaning, are you going to authorize the cleaning?
You could clean it, right?
I can clean it. For a small fee, I will do anything.
Okay.
I don't know, should I have that city solid for the record, I believe? And I don't know if Sean can help us, but I think if it's the hood, isn't there a certified, you have to hire a specific company that's certified to do that?
Yeah, we have a company.
We do.
We have a company come in.
Just so that you guys know, that you have to have a specific certified company.
So that would be the only thing.
Well, we'd probably want to take that on out of the county, if there's a liability, a potential grease fire, probably pay the guy and make sure it's clean.
And that's what we've done throughout the last agreement. We had a company come in and do the cleaning, every time, just because it needs to be done professionally.
So we'll leave that. But number six, I think we should, under Lisa Building, is back.
I said, number six, what?
Under Lisa Building, number six is the stipend for improvements. And I don't know if you guys have been out to the golf course. It's been improved vastly, you know, there's new carpeting. I mean, it looked really nice, and...
But on number six, didn't we say that we will work with her on that, and we can do that through our county manager?
Well...
That's all. But it's not an automatic.
It's things as needed, you know?
So what, if we're going to follow past practice with all of our grants, what they do is they submit, if you give them the $5,000, we don't give, the county doesn't give them a $5,000 check. They will come in and say, we need $1,000 for new chairs. That's how you, the commission decided to do it last year with grants, that we just don't give them a lump sum check. We can follow that procedure, or we can do it a different way, but that is the past practice. Anytime the county gives out money in a grant, we don't give them a lump sum. They come and say, well, we have $1,000, and here's the receipts, and then we take care of it that way.
Which I think is the better way to do it, is when, that they come in as needed. But with doing all of this, are we following within the agenda request?
Yes, that's what I wrote in there, you know?
Judy?
So, of that money, that would be in a grant form, I feel that anything purchased for the clubhouse should stay with the clubhouse.
And it did. Everything that we've purchased in the past has stayed with the county.
And that's what's written in there. Anything that I'm talking about with that $5,000 is stuff to stay with the clubhouse, even after we leave. I mean, that's not things that we would take.
No, it's county material, county, you know, physical assets, I understand that. But I have a problem calling it a grant, because it's not a grant.
No, it's not.
We are just simply authorizing up to $5,000, and for you to work with the county manager on what is needed. And then, how you work that out. No, we're not doing, we're not just handing over $5,000. And no, we're not doing...
That's all it is, yeah. No different if she was renting a house, hey, my water softener broke down. You know, I'm going to fix it as the renter, you know, so.
And there may become times when something bigger than, I don't know what's out there, or what equipment, you know, but there's always something that needs replaced, you know?
So Kelly, are you okay with that, with these changes? Do you want us to take some action on that?
No, that I'm okay with, because that's how I wrote it.
The only change we're doing, I'm sorry, is actually back again to taking off number one for the $7,500.
Good, so Ted, you think we can get some, Ted Shervy, Ted and Keith, with Ted Shervy, first part next week, Monday, Tuesday?
John Shervy.
John Shervy, sorry, yes.
I won't be here, but I'll be in...
Oh, you're going to be in Washington.
Ted?
So, yeah, if you're available. When will you be back?
We'll be back Friday afternoon, because we have to work Monday.
Yeah, if that works for you, Ted.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. The following Monday, I have to go to the tax commission for our tax abatement, or tax waiver, so it'll be the following Tuesday.
Okay. If you're fine with that, we can meet with John.
I'm fine with that, or we could meet, you and I and him could meet next week sometime.
Yeah, yeah, it's just whatever. I'm just, I want the golfers to have a place to golf.
No, I understand. I don't mind what you guys decide to do on this. And Kelly, she looks like a wonderful applicant, but we just have to get her permit. We have to be very delicate now. We're right, we're right at the end of getting the land ourselves, and then we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Okay, Keith?
So the golf course will be open. We're going to open at a regularly scheduled time. The school has already showed interest in the golf club at the school. So the golf course will be open. The majority of the fees are collected at the treasurer's office, except for the day, when somebody walks in and wants to play golf for the day. But the passes and golf carts are all paid for at the treasurer's office.
So they'll be able to golf, they just...
Yeah, we're going to open regular scheduled golfing time, there just wouldn't be somebody in the clubhouse.
But either way, even if we would take this exactly as she proposed it, and it would still have to go through BLM. So we're still on the same, right on the same wavelength. We're just saying we made some changes. And if you want us to go ahead with that, I think we're ready for a motion. So you're okay with that, Kelly?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve management services for the Mountain View Golf Course and award a contract to Kelly Sonderman, doing business in overtime sports bar and grill, and approve the proposal submitted by Ms. Sonderman, with the exception of removing, under Scope of Services, item number one. Would you like me to read that in?
Yes, but please add contingent upon...
Approval.
Approval, but... And you better put in how many years you're going to make this contract.
She requested three.
Three, yeah.
I would suggest you do it one year.
Which is how we do most of our contracts.
And that's what the BLM had us do last time.
Okay, go ahead, she...
Are you okay with one?
Is she? Excuse me.
Two, there's.
Are you one?
No.
Kelly, you're okay with two?
Um, it's just a lot of upfront money to be put toward a business to not have extended amount of time, you know what I mean? That's why I put three years.
So if we did do three years, we have a thirty-day out?
We do.
Can we, or would that be violation of contract, have to...
She's got a thirty-day out.
Does she?
Mm-hmm.
On both sides?
Both sides?
Yeah, thirty-day notice by either party with notice by county, prior to the three-year agreement, time limit to be for just cause only.
Yeah, but we've just called it out?
That's for any reason.
So we'll leave-
So we put that, we, you guys have mandated that in every contract.
You don't have yours on either.
You guys have mandated that in every contract, that we have a thirty day out clause, so.
So at will, you can terminate the contract for any reason?
Yes.
We don't make a habit of doing that.
We don't make a habit of doing that, Kelly, that is all we do.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying you do, I'm just, yeah, it's, it's, that's a very scary thing, you know, when you have a lot of money invested into something.
Well, it is a three year contract, but we have to allow ourselves to be able to get out if we need to.
And I don't think we've ever-
Ever.
Ever.
But you can leave us behind right too, and then they don't have such a nice experience out there. They can golf, but they don't have food or drinks, and everything.
Okay, I'm taking your, okay, so I am gonna try and start over.
So, um, I will approve the contract for the management services for the Mountain View Golf Course, submitted by Kelly Sonderman, doing businesses overtime sports bar and grill. With the proposal submitted, removing, under scope of services, item number one, stating, we will collect all golf fees for the county for the full golf season. In order to do this, we ask that Lander County provide seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars to us annually, to help compensate for part of the wages and payroll taxes needed to cover labor costs for the hours that are not typical for an operation as a bar, restaurant, or retail shop. The money provided to us by the county would cover a minimum cost for a person to work four hours a day. We would be responsible for all wages above minimum wage pay for those hours. We will pay the labor costs for the other eight to twelve hour plus days, hours a day of operation, depending on the time of year. Also, under Lisa Building, item number four, changing the contract to read thirty day notice by either party. That will be the exception under Lisa Building. This is contingent upon, um, the BLM approving.
And, and subject to modification of the contract, part of the signing, because we've gotta make sure that the language we put in the last contract exists in this one. Such as, such as they, what their responsibilities and duties in collecting our fees and, and what to do with it.
So basically, we have a contract out of county, is that what you're saying, Kelly?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, I'm not gonna s-
But you can, if you would, a suggestion would be to accept the proposal, uh, without the, the seven thousand dollars, and to put, uh, in county form, uh, and subject to the approval of the BLM, and the finalized contract will be subject to your approval.
Okay, so I basically kinda covered all that other part, except for the finalized contract would be subject to our approval?
Yes, because we have to put some language in there.
To approval of all parties.
That's not contained in her proposal.
Okay.
You agree with that?
I, yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Please don't make me repeat.
I guess, just remember, the contract will come back to you too.
Yes.
Yes, I know, okay.
So it isn't like you're signing your blood away, you're dead. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Sadie's got it.
Oh, Sadie, sorry.
So I don't get, get rash for it. Okay, just to make it clear for the record, for the recording, with Judy making the motion, taking one out, what she completely read in, does that mean that Kelly will not be collecting all golf course fees for the county? Cause like she read that whole number one in there, so who's gonna be collecting those? So I just wanna make it clear for the record, for transcribing and for the counties, when you minus out the whole entire number one, you're also mining, minusing out the whole, yeah.
That's why I pointed out that it would be subject to the language contained in Lander County's contract.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that clear.
So we're good.
We're good, because you put in, it's subject to our, to our legalese, or to our language.
So basically, we're approving all of one, just not the amount of seven thousand, right?
Right.
We're gonna put all of the, her proposal elements in our contract language.
Ted? I'm, I'm sorry, folks, we're having a real problem this afternoon with the green, so, so please remember to push before you talk. Go ahead, Ted.
So we're essentially going to adopt her proposal, put it in our contract that already exists, that also contains the language we need on how they, they, they collect our fees and what they do with them and stuff like that. And at that point, when it's finished, I will give a copy to Kelly, and she can go over it and, and make any modification she wishes, and then finally, when we're done, it goes to you.
And I might add that it's, the contract's been pretty standard throughout, all the time through the golf courses.
Oh, yes.
Or hasn't changed, 'cause I know we, we, uh, yes, right, we approved several, a few when I was, you know-
Usually what we just change is, is, uh, we put the thirty day clause in there. We put, uh, the time, you know, the years. And everything else is the same, how they collect the fees, and they have to give it to the treasury once a week, and stuff like that.
And it's passed, I love it.
Sure. I just have a question. A few, but, so what does this mean? Um, we wait to do anything until that final contract that you do? Okay.
We'll try to get that as soon as possible.
All right. I do have a question, though. Um, would it be possible for Kelly to go out and look at the golf course prior to that, to, to see what?
I, I did a walkthrough, um, prior to, um, just a, you know, I mean, a fast one.
Okay, that's all I was wondering, so.
Yeah.
All right.
So the, the, what's gonna take the longest is the BLM approval. When we can get and sit with Mr. Sher- he can give it to himself, he doesn't have, I don't think he has to, he doesn't like to contact Washington on this issue. Because they're, they're just as culpable as we are for violating the, the conditions.
Okay, we're moving on, and gee, it's only, um, two o'clock in the afternoon, and we are on agenda two. And J U B is not here, but we still can approve it unless we have any questions at all. But it is pretty standard. For possible action to approve or disapprove, the fiscal year two thousand twenty FAA Airport Improvement Program, which is the AIP, grant application for the access road and taxi line project at the Austin Airport for the FAA share of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a Lander County match of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and approve the county manager to sign.
So this is the, uh, the contract that we've, or the project that we've talked, talked about several times in the past, and, um, this is the contract, it's a standard contract. Ted's reviewed it?
Yes.
Okay, and, and there's nothing out of line, we have the money for it. Uh, J U B, we had a, a, he had a meeting out at the airport related to our project, so I'm, I'm, I'm here to give it to you. But it's standard FAA stuff, it's the standard grant, ninety-four point seven five percent they pay, and then our match.
Well, that's a lot shorter than if they'd been here, so.
Yes.
I will make a, a motion that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty FAA Airport Improvement Grant, AIP, grant application for the access road and taxi lane project at the Austin Airport, for an FAA share not to exceed eight hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and a Lander County match not to exceed fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and approve the county manager to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Number three, county manager, for possible action to approve or disapprove or modify a newly revised and updated Lander County policy and procedures.
So this is something that everybody knows that we've been working on for, for a while. It's all been updated, you guys got copies of everything last week to review and compare. Um, the final copy that you have, the, the, uh, it's not the draft, is the, it's right out of PoolPact's template, with our, our, uh, name inserted. The, the only things that are not in there that we put in were the credit card policy and the merit language.
So I just want to state that I think that we should, um, defer this item for maybe possibly another week to give us time to revise, review it again.
Judy, I'm sorry, I can't hear you this far down. You'd wanna do what?
I, I would like to possibly have this deferred for at least another, till, till another meeting, to allow our newest commissioners to review it, um, and, and to not take any action on this item in the following, until, again, we can bring it back again for, after more time.
I agree with Judy too. I mean, I, I scanned it, but, I mean, I mean, you know.
Just make a motion to defer.
Okay, and, 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 I'm sorry, I, thank you. As part of the proposal, I writ, you all should have the copy in front of you, it says one point two scope. It should've been in front of you this morning. And that is, uh, the suggested language, in talking to the sheriff's department and my department, uh, that we need to insert into the scope. And the admin department knew this was coming, uh, because we didn't like the language that was contained in the old one, that, that, that separated us. But to, to explain this, legally, there is a confidential requirement for my office and the sheriff's office, and that does not extend to the rest of the county. Now, it does not mean that the DA's office won't adopt the policies and procedures of the county into our policy, because we will. And that's what I put there, is we anticipate, when you adopt it, that we're gonna adopt it. And the sheriff's department has their own updated policies and procedures in place.
So I have a question, it's the same question I had, uh, back when we had this, kinda, this topic came up, was that I don't understand why everything's not under one central HR department in the county. And I checked with Winamaka, and the DA's office over there does not, they, they, they operate under one DA's office, I mean, under one HR, they don't have their own HR department.
That's true.
So I don't understand why you want to have that in your department.
Because in talking to our district court judge, not their district court judge, he, he says he'll do an audit, he has to, but, but he demands it. He says there's a confidentiality requirement that exists, and the, if, if we, right now, we share the same HR person, so it's no big deal. But I anticipate at some point in time, I know, that we're gonna have different HR persons. If we have one centralized HR, then that HR would be over confidential information in my department. And not only with the HR, which is the county manager, the assistant HR would, and the county commissioners would. And those confidential matters in the sheriff's office, in the DA's office, are not privileged to go to those people. So we're going to have the same policies, is what I'm saying, Commissioner.
So do we have a motion to defer?
No, we won't.
I just, I wanted to make a comment before, Sadie, is, um, not to argue with you, Ted, I'm just saying that HR should be confidential in every aspect. What department she's in, or he, what, whatever department HR is working in, should have the utmost confidentiality, is all. I will make a motion that we defer item number, um, three, and can I add four? Can I add four?
Can you what?
It hasn't been opened, but can I add four?
Oh, yeah.
Add four.
All right, I have something to say first, please.
So hold on, you're saying item number four?
Oh, three and four. No, let's, we wanna do that separately, if you want to do that.
So what do you mean by four?
Okay.
Of course, the following-
Is there a second on Judy's?
No, I wanted to add something to say first, is that okay, or no?
You can definitely add, you're the commissioner, but get your thing.
All right, I will. So I went on this, um, I went through this policy that had to do with this swimming pool, and I, one-
We're not on this one yet.
We're on three.
We're on, I thought, oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were on four.
Nope, we're on three.
I'm sorry.
We need a second?
So I'll be quiet.
Sadie has a comment?
We can still do a second, any of you seconding?
Do I have a second?
I'd like to hear what she has to say first.
Before you second, okay.
Sorry, Sadie Solvin, for the record, just to let you know, um, I had in place, and still have in place, a separate policy and procedures, um, because the main policy and procedures was not fully adopted, so I've had that in place. Now, the reason is, is I was given direction by the judge at the time when they were in our office, 'cause of the confidentiality for our drug court, juvenile court, but also the elections with the driver's license and social securities. So, um, not only do we follow, or will be following, what have you, of course, the policy, the thick one, but I had additional confidentiality. So I just wanted to put that there. That's one of the reasons why I had my own, uh, small just policy and procedures, was for the fact that we didn't have the large one in, in place per se, 'cause it'd been so long, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sadie.
I'll second, to the chair.
Okay, Judy made the motion, we defer number three, which is, um, our policies and procedures. We will look at this again. Brian seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that passes. Now, now you're on number four, county manager, for possible action to approve or disapprove, or modify a newly revised and updated Battle Mountain Recreation Center policy and procedures.
So the-
Keith?
The, uh, Sean has been working with PoolPact on this. Um, they did go back and review it, and there should be an email in your packages, in your books, with some updated recommendations, so it would probably be good if, if it was tabled.
I will make a motion that we defer item number four, uh, the review of the modified and updated Battle Mountain Rec- Recreation Center policies and procedures.
All right, I have, um, for this one, I, I went through and read all of this, and Keith, did you have time to go through all of this and read the entire thing?
I have not read the entire thing, no. I've read part of it.
All right, so we have a problem on one of the pages that needs to be corrected before it's been brought back.
Okay.
So if you're gonna go to page, um, it's gonna say at the top, as Lander County Recreation and Center lifeguard, I will. So I would like you to go down to number ten and read that item.
Read it out loud, please.
I'm gonna find it real quick, sorry.
Can you say PoolPact reviewed all this?
They've been working on it with Sean, yes.
I think it's the fifth page.
Thanks, Sadie.
Your packet's separated, and that's including it.
As a Lander County life, as a Lander County Recreation Center lifeguard, I will.
At number ten.
At number ten. Always watch out for high-risk patrons, senior citizens, children, and minorities.
How long has this been in effect, if that's what we need?
I don't believe that it's actually been put in place, this is just a draft copy.
So are we able to ask?
Sean Baker, by the time, sir, um, PoolPact told us to table this, 'cause they are still reviewing it as well. We put it on there because a week ago you, sorry, Ted.
Green.
So we are still reviewing it and going over it, and PoolPact did say table it.
So I would like to know where this form came from.
It was actually put together by my staff, and all of us, um, so we will, I will review it and get a, a regular copy back to you. It was actually put together by my staff and all of us, um, so we will, I will review it and get a, a regular copy back to you.
So I want you to go back over and look at what he's looking at, please.
I didn't put that in there. I will, we'll be taking care of it. But PoolPact, our pool guy, did review it. Marshall had looked at it.
We will fix that, Commissioner Ancho, for sure.
Okay, we do have a, a motion on the floor to defer this. Is there any second, or you wanna continue to work on this?
I'll second the defer.
Okay, Brian seconded it. Any other discussion on it? Okay, motion is to defer. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are deferring number four. That passes. You guys just wanna get out of here before five o'clock, that's all. We are on number eight. County Manager for Possible Action to Approve or Disapprove, Resolution 2020-02, to establish a special reserve fund, 200 entitled net proceed, uh, net proceeds of minerals, NPM, future reserve fund, and actually, I do believe this is, um, this is my rainy day fund I asked for, right?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, there is several reasons we looked at this, um, and I, I guess I just always thought we had one. Um, it does have some restrictions on it, of course, but that's the reason for this reserve fund, is if our county finds ourselves in some real problems, and we have that for a couple of years, we actually have some reserve. It's a good place to start, and we can only put so much a year away. So, um, for our future and our prosperity, I am asking you to take a look at this very seriously. And Mr. Keith, do you have any comments?
That, I think you covered it completely. This is what it's for. A backup or rainy day fund. And this has been, we, we've run this by taxation and, and, um, our tax guy, the tax individual that comes here and works with the county, and this is the way to go.
And I have looked at it, and it, it meets existing law.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Yeah.
Uh, before I do, does anybody wanna discuss anything? Before I read this for a motion, does anybody wanna discuss anything? So I'll make a ma- a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2020-02. A rel- resolution to establish a special revenue fund, 200 entitled, entitled, NPM Future Reserve Fund within the Lander County Treasury. Whereas the Lander County Board of Commissioners are responsible for the long-term financial condition of Lander County. Whereas Nevada Revised Statute 362.171 provides the criteria for the establishment of a new fund. This new fund will be called NPM Future Reserve Fund. Whereas Lander County is extremely dependent on the mining industry for yearly county funding. Whereas the NPM Fund Reserve Fund is being created to help ease any financial burden on Lander County due to a slowdown in mining or a closing of a mine in Lander County. Whereas the use of this fund is outlined in Nevada Revised Statute 362.171, subparagraph 1A B, and reads as follows. Each county to which money is appropriated by Section 1 of NRS 362.170 may set aside a percentage of that appropriation to establish a coun- county fund for mitigation. Money from the fund may be appropriated by the Board of County Commissioners only to mitigate adverse effects upon the county which result from, A, a decline in the revenue received by the county from the tax on the net proceeds of minerals during the two fiscal years immediately preceding the current fiscal year, or the opening or closing of an extractive operation from the net proceeds of which revenue has been or is reasonably expected to be derived pursuant to this chapter. Now therefore, it be resolved, the Lander County Board of Commissioners create the NPM Future Reserve Fund pursuant to NRS 362.171. Be it further resolved, the initial funding for the NPM Future Reserve Fund be a con- contribution of three point five million dollars from the net proceeds of minerals fiscal year 20 tax revenue distributed by the Department of Taxation in May of 2020. Be it further resolved after review of the proj- projected net pro- proceeds of mineral view, minerals re- revenue, the Lander County Board of Commissioners will determine a conditioned amount on a yearly basis to the NPM Future Reserve Fund. Be it further resolved, the attached addendum pursuant to NAC 354.241 be part of the resolution. Addendum for Resolution 2020-02 pursuant NAC 354.241, a statement of the purpose of the fund, the Lander County Board of Commissioners believes there is a need for a reserve fund to offset revenue shortfalls in case of mining slowdown or a closing of a mine in Lander County. The source of the money that is expected to be deposited in the fund pursuant to NRS 362.171, the net proceeds of mineral tax revenue. A short-term and long-term plan for the expenditures from the fund. A short-term and long-term plan for expenditures would be determined by the size of the revenue shortfall and the length in time of the revenue shortfall. A plan for the retention of, disposition of the balance reserves and retained earnings of the fund. Due to the nature of this reserve fund, the retention and/or disposition of the fund balances would be difficult to determine. A me- mechanism for curing deficiencies in the balance, reserves, and retaining, retained earnings of the fund, due to the nature of this reserve fund, curing deficiencies of the fund balances would be difficult to determine. A method by which a determination will be made as to whether the balance, reserve, and retained earnings of the fund are reasonable and necessary to carry out the purpose of the fund. Due to the nature of this reserve fund, reasonable fund balances would be difficult to determine. A list of all statute and regulations that apply to the fund, NRS 354, NRS 362, NAC 354, and NAC 362. However, not limited to. And I authorize the Chair to sign. Or Vice Chair.
Thank you, Judy. I appreciate you reading that. You have a second?
I second.
Thank you. So moved to a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you so much. Number nine, County Manager for Possible Action to Approve or Disapprove, Resolution 2020-03, to create two proprietary funds, 210 Austintown Water Fund and 215 Austintown Sewer Fund.
So this is the resolution, obviously, to create the accounts for when we take over, uh, the operation of water and sewer too. Uh, once we get to budget workshop, the board will decide how much money to put in, in each fund. This just sets up the fund numbers.
So how come now we have all these addendums?
Did they, did they correct it?
Yes, they did. Yeah, it's been corrected, Ted.
Further resolved?
The, the addendums are just additional backup for it?
Do I need to read the addendums?
Just the resolution, right. Just let's read the resolution. Yeah, further resolved, that's it.
This is the one, right here.
If we don't read the addendum in, it doesn't come part of the minutes.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Maybe that's why.
Because, because they made it part of it.
Yes, we have to, you have to read it all in?
Yeah, because, because of the language, instead of attached, it says be part of the resolution, so.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2020-03 of the Board of Lander County Commissioners. A resolution creating the Austintown Water Fund 210 and the Austintown Sewer Fund 215 as priority, pri- proprietary funds. Whereas the dissolution ordinance number 2019-2 affected July 1st, 2020, of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District 2, LCCSWD 2, a general improvement district formed under NRS 318. And whereas LCCSWD 2's powers include, but not limited to, supplying sew- sewer and water services to the town of Austin, Nevada, the assessment and collection of rates, and all other powers necessary, proper or convenient. And whereas, there is a need to continue the distribution, sale, and delivery of municipal water and sewer services provided by LCCSWD 2 in the town, in the Austintown area. And whereas, in accordance with NRS 318, the Lander County Commissioners have determined the services can be more effectively performed by an existing unit of government. And whereas, the Lander County Commissioners have determined this unit of government to be the town of Austin. Now therefore, it be resolved, the town of Austin, through the powers of the Lander County Commissioners, will create two new proprietary funds, the Austintown Sewer Fund and the Austintown Water Fund. Be it further resolved, that these two new funds will report all proprietary fund-type activities beginning in fiscal year 2021 and for every year after, thereafter. Be it further resolved, all fund activities for fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 will still be report by the LCCSWD 2 prior to July 1st, 2020. Be it further resolved, the attached addendum pursuant to NAC 354241 be part of the resolution. Addendum for Resolution 2020-03 pursuant to NAC 354.241, a statement of the purpose of the fund. To report yearly activity, both revenue and expenses, for the newly created Austintown Sewer Fund and Austintown Water Fund. The sources of the money that is expected to be deposited in the fund, the source of revenue is, however, not limited to sewer fees, water fees, and connection fees. A short-term and long-term plan for the expenditures from the fund. Short-term expenditures would be contingent on revenue flow. Long-term expenditures would be contingent on future fund reserves and retained earnings. A plan for the retention or dis- disposition of the balance, reserves, and retained earnings of the fund. The plan for these two funds is to operate them in a manner similar to the operations of a private business enterprise. Expenses including depreciation of providing goods or services on a continuing basis to the general public, financed or recovered primarily through charges to the users. The operations would generate revenue to build reserves for equipment purchase, maintenance, and replacement of assets. A mechanism for curing deficiencies in the balance, reserves, and retained earnings of the fund. The neck- mechanisms for curing the deficiencies could be, but not limited to, increasing user fees, increasing connection fees, increasing property tax levies, and applying for federal and state grants. The me- method by which a determination will be made as to whether the balance, reserve, and retained earnings of the fund are reasonable and necessary to cre- carry out the purpose of the fund. The method for determining if balances, reserves, and retained earnings is reasonable and necessary would be a comprehensive review of audited numbers and comparing the funds with like-type funds in other govern- local governments. A list of all statutes and regulations that apply to the fund. The statutes and regulations that apply to the fund, however, not limited to, are NRS 350, NRS 352-4, NAC 350, and NAC 354. I authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to sign.
Thank you, Judy made the motion. Thank you again, Judy, for all of that. Brian seconded it. Any other discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and that passes. Number 10, an accounting manager, for possible action to set a date and time for the budget workshop. And that has been s- looked at for March 18th and 19th?
That is correct. I wanted to make sure that that fits into everyone's schedule, as well as setting a time. You know, it was discussed, the last meeting, but I might put it, uh, on board and so forth.
I'll make a motion that we set the time for, kinda, to start at 9:00 PM, I mean, AM.
An 18th and 19th?
And, uh, March 18th and 19th.
All right, I'll second that.
Judy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How far do you guys wanna go? Do you wanna go 9:00 to 5:00 with an hour and a half lunch?
You don't have any.
How far do you guys wanna go? I should have asked that. Do you wanna go to 5:00 with an hour, hour and a half lunch?
That's how we did it last year, right?
Okay, yeah, pr- pretty much. I just wanted to be sure that we're 9:00 to 5:00, okay.
9:00 to 5:00 for the first day. If we finish earlier in the second, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We are on number 12, Public Works. For possible action to approve or disapprove a change order from day engineering for the water reclamation facility wetlands project in an amount not to exceed $480,158. Thank you, Marty. I know you've been with us all day through.
Bert Ramos for the record.
So we are at a very large change order, and you get to explain why.
So Bert Ramos for the record. So we had a, a mathematical error here when we went for our calculation on what we had to take off for dirt on our wetlands project. This is a bid item, so it's a continuation of the bid item. We're, they're extending the unit price, so we aren't breaking any laws by doing a change order. I know it's a huge size, um, but it is already bid, so when I say unit price, is what I mean is when, when this job was bid, the contractors that bid on the job all put their best unit price on each portion of the project. So even if we rebid this, that price would still hold as the best price, bid price that the county could have got. So we're just extending that unit price to, to finish this job. I do have it in my budget, by the way.
That's, that's a good thing.
Yes.
But, but tell me then, when we actually did the approval, we didn't have the right amounts?
No, well, we had the right amount for the bid project at hand. So what happened is, when, when we ran the numbers for the dirt takeoff that we're, how much dirt we're supposed to move on this project, we missed a portion of dirt that had to be moved. And now we gotta come back and correct that, right our wrong.
So it, it does have to be a change order, there is a.
It has to be a change order.
Okay.
Correct.
Wow. Million dollar project, you know, $500,000 or change order. So, how, I mean, how did the miscalculation happen?
It just, it, it happens. Here's the.
So it was the calculations that were put forth by our engineer?
Yes, um, we have, in, in our engineer's defense, we've been, I, I can't even put a number on how many projects we've done, and have never had an error. It's been countless projects. I know, um, I looked in my file cabinet this morning, we had 11 of them we've done since 2018 to current. And have never, all of our change orders have been to credit, and the engineer's done us a great job the entire time. Many change orders in credit from the engineer back to us. Um, I'd like to point them, them details out, and, you know, nobody's perfect. We all make errors. I've been pushing on Marty pretty hard to get some of these projects out. We don't have a ton of time to try to get them done, and things happen. I gotta take a little bit of, a little bit of heat for this, because I was pushing on Marty pretty hard to get these projects out.
I would like to hear from Marty, and I do understand that people do make mistakes, and, uh, it happens, but this is substantial.
Marty Ugalde, unfortunately, for the record. That, that is correct. It's a large amount of money. I'm thoroughly, um, embarrassed and ashamed of this. So, uh, to put it in layman's terms, when I do a design project, I have to also put together the specifications that include bid items. And I grossly underestimated the amount of dirt that had to be moved, and that was my error and my error alone. I did two cross-sections on the pond and came up with a quantity for cut and fill. We did have, um, a credit back on the fill portion of it, but there was still so much more dirt to move, and that was solely my error and my mistake, and, um, I have no excuse for that, and I missed that.
And just to clarify, Bert, even with this, we, even with this additional, we, that's still a little bit of everything else that we got in, correct?
Oh, yes, by far.
How much was, um, did we, um, budget for this?
So the, for this project, I think we budgeted 700 and something thousand. I don't know the exact number on that. So when I say that I have it within my budget, we're gonna have to augment my budget to cover this, but I do have the money within my budget.
So we actually budgeted 700,000 for this, and the bid came in at 1.9.
Yep.
So we were over budget on the bid.
Correct.
So the engineer's estimate on that was off, and then now you want another $500,000.
Correct.
For a $700,000 project, it's now one and a half million dollars.
An, an engineer's estimated, by the way, that, so, so.
I know.
It, it, I'm just pointing that out for, just to clarify for everybody that it's not, we wanted this, and then we, we just extended this out beyond, way beyond. We never, that's not the, an engineer's estimate is just that, it's an estimate. What the bids come in is completely separate of the true estimate.
So that 700,000 you budgeted, that was based off an estimate we got from the engineer? And that's what you were budgeting for, 'cause that was their, their estimate?
Yes.
Okay, I see. That's how it came.
And, and so to, to, a little. And, and so to, to, a little backup on this, the reason this is important is because currently we're discharging our water to the river. Our treated water from the sewer plant. It's treated water, they, they claim that it's decent water. However, our, our phosphates and nitrates are really high. So in order to keep discharging to the river, we're either going to have to do a major upgrade to our plant. And, and start treating with a whole bunch more chemicals and a whole bunch of other things to, to bring these numbers down. Or put it to our wetlands, which the wetlands is just a, that's what it is, it's just gonna hold water. You know, let the ground absorb most of it. And we're hoping to run that for seven to nine months out of the year and then discharge the river for three months.
Does that project help us with if, any future development we have out here? If people go on to city sewer, does it help?
Oh yeah.
It does?
Definitely. Cause we, um, so it's a lot easier on the plant as far as treatment too. Um, we have a lot more leniency with that.
So I have a question. On these big projects, cause I'm still new at this, do, are there contingencies ever built into these in case we have a problem like that?
We do. Yes, that we put it, we put a, obviously this is much larger than what we have in our contingency.
I just wanted to make a clarification. Correct me if I'm- I just wanted to make a clarification. Correct me if I'm wrong Bert. You said augmenting the budget. We're not gonna augment it because it's in his budget. We're gonna do a line item transfer.
Yes, I, I apologize. That, yes, that, that's mis speaking on my behalf.
And I am, I, I understood that.
Sorry.
So what line item, how would we transfer that? Because didn't this come out of oh fifty-five?
What it is, he's got money in other budgets where, or other projects where money has been saved. So we will take money out of those other budgets that, or other projects that have been completed and put it into this project. And it'll just be a line item transfer within his, uh, previously approved budget.
It's still in the CCP, C, fine though.
Yes, it is, that is correct, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. If we're ready one for- Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the change order from day engineering for the water reclamation facility wetlands project in an amount not to exceed four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, one, four hundred and eighty thou- four hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Can you bring in the motion for the approval? And I have to second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and that passes.
Okay, thank you guys very much. I just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number thirteen.
Can't hear.
Thank you. What'd you say, Michelle?
I can't hear.
I can't.
She said can't hear Patsy. Oh, she can't hear you Patsy.
I didn't have my mic on. Thank you, Michelle.
You were pointing your finger.
Well, I'm sitting by myself, I can look this way, but now I have to look this way. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to number thirteen. Commissioners, for possible action to adopt the current rates and system obligation fees. Or to set new water and sewer rates and system obligation fees for water and sewer district number two customers. And this was on our agenda. We wanted some more backup. So we have the backup and what the current rates are. For residential and connection and the business. For the Austin area there. Now, if I understand this right, when we actually did our ordinance, it said we could attach an exhibit if we wanted to add an exhibit to the ordinance of new fees or something like that?
It would be attached on the finalizing ordinance.
Yes. On the final, now that we have the date that you want to take over, it could fit beginning of the next fiscal year. And any other, anything else should be attached to the finalizing ord- ordinance, which I'm currently working on. I'm waiting for, for these things like-
You see what we're trying to do?
Yeah. And, uh, if you want to keep them the same, then I'd put they'd be the same rates as, as Battle Mountain customers. And if not, then I'd attach as an exhibit, the new rates. And that would be published with the ordinance and everything else.
Okay.
So it's up to you.
Right, it's back on because I think you wanted to make a motion last meeting to adopt the rates as what they currently were. And I, I wanted to see the numbers before I voted on it. That's why it's back on, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's exactly right. Judy.
What's F O S again? Or S O F? S O-
S- system obligation fee.
System. I, I don't think we, I don't agree with the system obligation fee. We don't have that in Battle Mountain.
Well, part of it is because Austin is so small.
Right.
And, and that's a big part of their income.
But seeing as how this is not now income for Austin, since we're taking it over.
For us to absorb it, but you still have to think about absorbing it. And we were gonna be absorbing quite a bit, I know, but that's, that's really something. System obligation fees are very, very common in so many areas. Especially around Kingston and Gilman and Austin in the lower part because we just don't have the numbers. I'd like to do away with them completely. That would be wonderful, people not to have to pay them. But on the other hand, if the water runs by you and, and it's, I think of it as when I go to the hospital and they charge me a hundred and ten dollars for the sheet that they put over me in the emergency room, excuse me, they get the sheet back. I didn't even keep it. But that's part of doing business. That's the big cost for them to offset the rest that they lose on. So it's totally up to you folks.
If we were to forget that system, or system obligation fee, that's quite a chunk, isn't it?
When you look at the numbers on the back of the number of people.
Can I? So, uh, Bert Ramos for the record. So total system obligation fees, what you have here is you end up, the, the system in Austin, they collect two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents a month. On system obligation fees. And that's on a hundred and eleven customers, um, that are just regular citizens and then thirty-three businesses. So if, the difference in the Battle Mountain rates are sixty-three dollars and fifteen cents for your sewer and water for a customer and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for Austin, including their system obligation fee. So it's a, um, total of four dollars and twenty-seven cents difference that Austin customer would pay more. With, with that said, um, the businesses pay eleven dollars less if you go off Battle Mountain's current rates. Eleven dollars and five cents less to be exact. The, uh, the grant told you, if, if we work off the baselines here and you can run these numbers a thousand different ways after, because over five thousand gallons, then your, then your cost goes up, right? But you're roughly eighteen hundred dollars, eighteen ninety-nine eighty is what the difference of taking the system obligation fees are. And taking them off of the, off of, off of Austin to Battle Mountain. So in, in short, you're saving the Austin residents. The, I got chicken scratch everywhere here, the, uh, two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And that, is that?
So, so that's what you're saving the, the, and, and when I say saving the Austin residents, I'm saying that because that's what they're paying in system obligation fees for properties that may not be being used currently. Cause there's three hundred and one, um, system obligation fees, a hundred and eleven of them are regular users and thirty-three are businesses. So that two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars are savings that we're giving, would be savings. And I remember that, I believe that our promise to Austin was that we weren't gonna raise their rates. And so to stick true to that promise, I believe that, that by adopting Battle Mountain's rates. We save the businesses eleven dollars and five cents a month. The, um, the Town of Austin goes up four dollars and twenty-seven cents per use, per user that's on, on the system. However, they save the two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars as, as a whole across the board, which ends up costing Battle Mountain roughly the eighteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month is what we pay additional from, from what, so we, we would be saving the residents of Austin ultimately. And is, the other thing that I'd like to point out, if we're gonna take this over, I think to keep with one standard billing system, the secretaries will love us for that. Um, it becomes a slight nightmare when you start changing your rates and your fees and I, and the other thing I'd like to point out is here in Austin. On their, on, they have some really, some things that don't really make a lot of sense in, um, as far as they don't, there's no fee for, you know, extending sewer lines. There are things that financially would cost Battle Mountain a, a bunch more. If, if a business came in and wanted the extension of a water line, um, they, they aren't fair numbers for how we would do business, if that makes sense.
It does. And on the other side is you folks charge a whole lot different, like per motel, per motel rooms, per RVs, per RV things. So it would, it would really hurt our businesses to be charged like Battle Mountain is being charged. But we don't have near the business in Austin as you do here. So, um, I, I understand that it would be really nice to have exactly the same. But I gotta tell you, we've said over and over again to our people, we are not going to raise your rates. So even if I raised them a dollar, I wouldn't want to do that. That's not, now if you want to cut the system obligation fee or even reduce it, I'm okay with that.
Well, that's what Bert's saying is if we adopt the same thing as Battle Mountain, reduce the sys- system obligation fee. It makes it standard billing for his office and, and then the promise is good, that we didn't raise the rates.
But it's not, but it's not the same. Because we charge different. We charge like if, if an RV park has two hookups or whatever. That here you only get what, two or three hookups per per meter or whatever. I don't know how you do it. But I know when we looked at it, you have more, they have more fees than we do, more times. Does that make sense?
Not really.
Okay, let's just say that you had, um, twenty RV spaces. How do you bill for twenty RV spaces?
So it's right here on the commercial water base. So it's zero to twenty-five thousand gallons is forty-five dollars.
Are you reading Austin or Battle?
I'm reading Battle Mountains.
Okay.
It's, and I believe it should be there in your backup. Um, twenty-six thousand to seventy-five thousand gallons is sixty dollars. Seventy-five thousand gallons plus is eighty dollars. Um, a dollar twenty per thousand gallons above the monthly base of five thousand gallons. So I think is what I, is what I'm trying to say is that this actually Battle Mountain is taking a loss. If we left the current rates like Austin leaves them right now and, and how, how it works out. The, the total system per month is eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents. Is, is the total in Austin. If you, if you take the Battle Mountain rates and apply them directly across and, and we're going off the, just the baseline top of this. You're at seven, eight, nine, ten, you're at ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-one, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, so you're-
Yeah, per residential, you said that it would raise, per residential it would raise it.
They, these are Battle Mountain's rates compared to Austin's rates, commercial and residential combined. So on the commercial side in Austin right now, you pay three thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, I'm, just talk individually.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm trying to lump them together to show the, to show the, show the, the savings on the, a whole bunch, but so because right now I don't know exactly what Battle Mountain's are breakdown on this one minute. If you give me just a minute, I will.
And I understand what you're saying, but my, my residential customer is not gonna care that you save four dollars somewhere else. They're gonna care if theirs went up one dollar. And that's what I'm saying.
Well, so the system obligation fees for the residents of Austin. Th- this is where I'm saying the cost savings comes, a, a few of them people have multiple properties that are paying the sixteen dollars but don't have any water access.
I know that.
Okay, so that's the two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars that they're paying, that the residents of Austin would no longer that, these are people that, these are, the two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars are people that are not connected. That's what they're making off of system obligation fees with no connection. So that's not just, that's, that's not including the, the remainder of the people.
Okay, those are people that have the homes that haven't connected or have the property.
Property and don't have a connection, correct.
Right. If they have a home, they usually connect. Okay. Those are, some folks are out of state, some folks are, are in state but out of town. I understand that. That's not my local residents. My local residents are still paying the system obligation fee also, right?
Correct.
So you're gonna save a lot of money for these people that are not Austin residents, but just have property.
Four twenty-seven, one, one second. It's, uh, and-
Now, we have a few local people that have a couple hookups, two or three hookups on their own property. So they're paying two or three system obligation fees. I understand that. That would save them, but I think you're saving the big, big bulk on the people that don't live there. Judy.
So maybe I missed it and, and I think you were getting at this, Patsy is, um, take I don't know who lives in town. Somebody who lives in town is, how much do you pay for water and sewer?
Sixty-three fifteen or something like that.
Okay, so we'll just say sixty-three dollars. What is one, one family, one household in Austin pay?
Right now they're paying fifty-eight eighty-eight. And that's the sixty-three fifteen, the, the Battle Mountain charges. Is, that's where I came up with four dollars and twenty-seven cents difference. So Austin would go up four dollars and twenty-seven cents for a residence. Um, however, the businesses would, would drop eleven dollars and five cents per business. Um, there's a six dollar and something difference there. But the four dollars and twenty-seven cents is where I come up with the savings for the Austin resident is anybody that is the two thousand seven hundred and forty dollar, or two thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars.
The system obligation fee.
Correct.
So I'm with Patsy. I don't think that we should, I mean, I understand trying to get it universal. It makes life so much easier for everybody in the billing process. But in the money process, I don't, you know, sorry. I mean, I want to make everybody's life easy. And, and especially in billing and, and things like that, but I don't want to raise their rates.
Four dollars is what we're talking about?
But still.
Do you guys think that maybe we should, uh, have maybe some of the Austin residents weigh in?
Well, let me ask-
I hate to speak too much for them. I'm just trying to give the basic numbers here and I don't want anybody to feel like I'm trying to weight this on either side because
So I, I, I would have, you know, not that I'm ready yet, but I would like to, to see a motion, um, to do away with the system obligation fees. And it does affect some people, but other people, you know, it's, when you have multiple system obligation fees, multiple setups on your property. It, it kind of gets more expensive, but I really do think we should just get away with those, do away with them.
Okay, I have the motion, but just a second. And yes, Bert, we understand you're just here giving us information and you're neutral. But I'm gonna ask, Michelle, do you have anybody from Austin? I, I know they might have been there this morning, but, um, we, we delayed it so long. Any input at all? How about you?
Hello?
Yeah, we got you. Go ahead.
I mean, basically, from what I hear from most of the citizens in town, it's like to say what Austin has currently without system obligation fee.
I'm, I'm sorry, we, we couldn't make that out. Speak a little bit quieter and see if we can pick it up.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, go ahead.
I was saying that from what I hear around town is that they would like to keep the Austin water rate without the system obligation fee.
System obligation fees, okay. Well, the, the motion hasn't been seconded, but we do have a motion to do away with that.
I didn't do a motion.
What?
It was, I didn't do a motion.
Oh, I thought you made a motion.
But I will make a motion.
No, no, that's okay. Um, because I have a problem doing away with all of the system obligation fees too. Because like I said, a lot of them are not local residents and that's the way still to have them available. To have a whole system available when they're ready to connect. That's the whole point. But, um, if you wanted to save them some money, personally, I, I don't want to say anything changed the way they have it. I really want the way they have it except for the SOF. And if you wanted to reduce the SOF, that would help some local people and it would help our people out of, out of the area too that have a system obligation fee.
Uh, ten dollars? I like even numbers.
I'm okay with even numbers. How do you feel?
What is the actual fee per person now?
Sixteen. That's sixteen oh five or something like that?
Sixteen seventy-one.
One six seven one. So that would reduce everybody's SOF.
Well, I'm just gonna throw it out here. I will make a motion that we decrease the system operation fees in Austin to ten dollars. And keep the existing rates the same.
Is this per resident and business?
Yes, I mean, everything is-
Include residents and business?
Uh, uh, yep. Eh eh yep, residents and business, everything. The only only change is to the um the fees would be to decrease the SOFs. Other than that, everything, businesses, residents.
I have a question. So when you're doing the billing, um because normally you put in a set amount, don't you, for the residents? So how is the system gonna differentiate between Austin and Battle Mountain for the fee changes?
Well, we'll have to put that into our system when we get there and it'll 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 calculate that for us once we get it set up. Now, adding the system obligation fee and and that, it it's just it's just another line we have to put in there. So so let me get this correct. I wanna make sure of this. So the total fee for Austin water and sewer would be fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents? Cause we're reducing it by six dollars and seventy-one cents, correct? Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Maybe we'll be tied. Okay, is everybody clear? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 That is great, Kathy.
Yes.
And and those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes. Uh we are going to reduce Austin's SOF down to ten dollars.
Everything else remains the same.
I'm sorry.
Everything else remains the same.
Everything else remains the same.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. We are on number fifteen. Commissioners, for possible action to review and update the Lander County liquor license ordinance, five point zero eight point zero one zero.
Okay, this was put on for your review?
Green.
This was put on for your review to uh accommodate the uh situation that we had today. It was one of the big reasons why it was put on for revision of uh that ordinance for the mobile uh liquor licenses.
So Ted, how would we, I mean, what would the verbiage, how would it be to where it would cover somebody that would have multiple locations?
I'd just have to come up with uh with some language. Off the top of my head, I don't know, Brian, it's uh
I wonder if Oco or Winamaka has anything
Well, I'm sure somebody does.
Something like that, cause there's a lot of trucks like in
I'm sure one county does, and that's where I would get it. I would take it. Now, we we're also supposed to look at uh the fees, if you wanted to raise the fees to and Kathy had some other ideas, I think.
Yeah, I thought that possibly you could add in the catering um portion of it if you had people coming in and doing catering and how you wanted to do your temporary, cause right now on your temporary, I think that it's one day for the people who already have the licenses. So just maybe we could look at, um cause you have, when we have things at the park, they're usually two days. Um and then you have the issue of like out at the golf, I had nothing, excuse me, not the golf course, out at the racetrack trying to um keep that because you have, the where the problem is I see in issues like that are you have people out there with a bunch of kids that are running around and you're trying, and it's all closed container, but you have to try to keep the kids from selling the alcohol. So it's just, I think, something that it's needs to be reviewed and um looked at from a it hasn't been looked at for a long time and see what the other counties are doing for those problems.
Question? So I guess, you know, I I don't have a problem in some sense of of these food trucks getting liquor licenses, but then again, on the other hand, you're sort of promoting um drinking and driving in a food truck. You know, you you don't typically walk up to them and so you go into a food truck and you get your whatever and then you get a beer. And what are you gonna do? You're gonna eat it and drink it and drive away. So I don't know. I mean, I did, I do support it for businesses in some sense, but is it really practical?
How's it any different than a restaurant? I'm not being trying to be
No, I I understand that, but
People go in and have food, have a beer, and then they drive home.
Because you're usually typically sitting in a restaurant for, you know, a longer period of time.
And drink more beers.
True.
We are not supposed to have the open container. Would they take the open container with them and and drive away in the car eating their taco and and beer? That's gonna be a problem by all means. Um but the one thing that that I wondered if we can change is how they pay their license. And their li- their license is paid quarterly and I'm going, I understand with the gaming, because gaming is expensive, but the quarterly license isn't all that expensive, depending what you wanna do, if you wanna raise her or not. But for our people that have been in business for a long, long, long time, quarterly seems to be unnecessary. Why can't we just pay it per year if we choose to? And then we don't have our officers going out, trying to look them up where the owner is and and give him the form every time or heard the form or whatever. Um so I I would like to see at least an option to do that. But with that, we'd have to make sure that if they do go out of business, there's no refunds. We're not gonna prorate. We're not gonna go through those kind of problems. But I do like the idea of being able to pay a whole year in advance. I hate to pay taxes quarterly.
Then the only reason they were set up that way, I was told, was because of the amount of money, and they are small amounts, but those amounts of money went into different quarters and um into the budget. And that's the only reason, that's the only thing I know about that part, is that they didn't want them paid um ahead of time because they wanted them um paid in a certain specific quarters. And that's not a ton of money, but that's was what was requested of me at the time. And the other issue is when you start having all the different types of licenses for the officers, like if you have a catering license at a house, not very many people are gonna want a law enforcement officer coming in to make sure there aren't youth uh drinking in there. So I mean, there's just, that's kind of touchy. I think that's why it was as basic as it is now, because the law enforcement now has the right, when you're issued the license, to go in and like to the civic center and look around and try to make sure that there aren't any juveniles drinking. So those are just some of the concerns.
Okay, when they do take that license in, they take it in for the owner and the owner isn't always there. So what, they just drop it off?
Usually now, the owner's the one who gets the license now. It's well, I that's when I was working there, I could say they were, the owner was. It was rare, it was a rarity that the owner was not there. Like, for example, the uh Hideaway would get a a temporary liquor license for the par- park. Well, the people would be at the park doing that, cause they it's their license and it goes off of their main license. So they wanna make sure things are done correctly. So I we never really had a problem with them not being there.
Well, is this something that that you'd like to look at a little bit farther and do some investigation and bring back?
I believe so, just for, just to see how things have grown and changed for the licensing.
Okay, well, let's look around, get some input and bring it back then. That's fine. No more discussion? Okay, we'll go on to sixteen. Correspondents, correspondence reports, potential upcoming agenda items.
Right now, we have a fairly short agenda. Right now, we have a fairly short agenda coming up. We only have two items plus the policy and procedures for the county and policy procedures for the rec center. So we're looking at like four items.
Actually, April is our um county government month, Counties Matter. Um and I would like to have that on the agenda to see what we'd like to do, if we want to reach out and do something special or we'd like a resolution or we'd like a bullet point like we did last year in the paper or something. But I'd like to see that on in March so we can get on it.
About a uh a set of Austin meeting? You want that on the agenda?
You bet.
We don't have a lot of stuff we can put on the Austin meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we
Usually we wait till we get some Austin stuff, because we can't do Battle Mountain stuff in Austin.
No, we understand that, but this is just to look at a meeting date. It isn't, I mean, we 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 can still look at it. I was gonna say
No, I'm I'm just saying that
Way after the time we t- we take over the the water and sewer, but you know what? You're gonna be one big mess down there with Highway fifty.
It seems to me that when we had, when we accumulate four or five Austin matters, that's when we would we would schedule a meeting.
And Austin looks at it like we'd like to have you down here once in a while.
And not be able to do anything?
But I don't, I don't know. I I've gotta tell you, maybe
That's up to you.
We should look at it a little bit later after Highway fifty is back in. Sadie?
I'm just here for Sadie Sullivan for the record. I'm here for public comment after you're done with correspondence. Sorry.
Okay, so nothing else under that. We will move to public comment. For non-agendaized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and or tend to make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner. But public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Public comment.
Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk for the record, just uh wanna give updates and so I have one here, sorry, but not sorry, cause I feel that you guys need to be informed. Um so from the updates for myself and the staff um in the office, it's been very crazy. We've had one to three conference call daily. We've had the Secretary of State here as well and IT in the office. Um we had Homeland Security. They did a testing to see how secure our internet, our services as to whether or not anybody could hack in um to our system. And with that, we are not secure. Um our tested test had came back that, and I, this is way over my head, but um there's some critical things that were not secure on. Um certain IP addresses were picked up that were not secured. And what it is, from what I understand, is we have an umbrella. So we have our main IP addresses for our servers and then we're with uh we're underneath that umbrella. Um and so there's several IP addresses that are not secured, so it's linked to our website, so that is the possibility of hackers coming in. Um on this one here, we're using three point two point three, whatever that means, and that's so outdated, it actually needs to be a six point oh, um is where they are, so it's no longer um uh we're behind, basically, and I have the printout for that. So I just wanted to let you know that um I got that test back from Homeland Security. And so uh after talking with IT, they knew that there would be some items come back that were not secured. So then that way it it helps them uh figure out what they need to do to tighten things down for security. Um let's see, SOS was here last week. It was uh our security team um from one thirty to six thirty. Um I've got with our IT gal and uh she's even stated this. And also, all the other clerks throughout the county are re- trying to revamp their offices because of the crucial everything that's going on with the elections. Um she even had stated that um some of the things are over their head. They do have an engineer, an IT engineer within their office that could help us with things and coordinate with the Secretary of State for coatings for those securities, that type of thing. Um also, uh a cyber liability claim if somebody was to hack in um and get any type of confidential um information, usually there are a few million dollars. Uh because generally you have to pay to get back the control and you may need to pay to fix any important information that was given out there, which would be on personal information, their identity, that type of thing. Um also, just to let you know on my budget, there's gonna be some things going up. And I wanna thank um Keith, Leslie, and Laura, because I get to go to Keith and Leslie and Laura and go, hey, I really need this. It's not in my budget. Keith's helped me out a lot on publications. Laura and Leslie, if I've needed any type of IT things, um I've been able to have their help with the the tech fees and the mapping fees. And then um also I'll be getting with legal, which I Ted knows from last year, but I haven't touched base with him yet. But I have my election board workers that work about fifteen, sixteen days during early vote and then the day of elections. Um so I'll need to get with him and figure out what I need to do. So I have my basic, uh there's about three or four people that do the early vote, plus my staff um that will need to get that rolling to see what the legal process is, cause it's only for about fifteen days, like I said. Um I just want to thank you guys and and please work with myself and my staff and it's been very, very crazy. Um anytime, just drop in, call me, whatever have you, because there's so much going on um in the office with so many hats in different directions um that have replaced ADS. Also, our um our elections is being updated currently, but they're talking about having another new system at the beginning of next year, so it won't even be the one they're updating now. Um DMV is rolling. We have several issues there. Um and so it's just been very, very crazy and interesting. But I wanna give you guys those updates so that way you know and are aware of it, so when I come up here. So anyway, thanks for letting me do a little public comment and it was probably over three minutes. Thank you.
The that's at our discretion, it does say. Thank you, Sadie. Um just I I just have one more reminder. Don't forget Wild event at PBS eight o'clock tonight for the museum. And with that, nothing else.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, Austin.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle. Keith, are you gonna be okay in your office for a minute?